And.
That's all I know.
He's gone.
Yeah, yeah, just me in, okay.
Yeah, we're ready, right, okay. Um, prepared food and beverage tax on July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, council approved resolution one five two one. Put a seven percent prepared food and beverage tax on the November fourth, twenty twenty five ballot. On September third, twenty twenty five, council voted to remove the measure from the ballot due to the cost. General discussion was held by council on a path forward. There is a general consensus to put the measure on the May twenty twenty six ballot. However, further discussion was needed on a possible change to the tax amount. Presented today is the original report from Eco Northwest estimating possible revenue from a five percent tax. Also attached is an explora- extrapol- extrapolation of the math out to ten percent. Additionally attached is cellphone tracking data for six local businesses showing that ninety percent of customers originate from outside Cascade Lock city limits. The final attachment is the breakdown of estimate estimated pay per resident at each percentage. Staff are looking for consensus on the percentage to move forward to create a new resolution and build impound materials. I believe there was talk of an idea of ten percent for May and if it didn't pass, adjusting it from there.
Because we, I didn't get any of this.
I'm, I'm listening for it also.
Yeah.
It was sent, it was sent a week ago.
On September twenty ninth.
Electronic.
No, it was in my box.
Electronic, yeah.
Oh, I don't think I put it in the full packet, yes.
Because it was gotten out before the packet.
I emailed it, yeah, back in September, but we can easily.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't need one. Two copies.
I know.
Three, three, thank you. She's gonna get us three copies. Although we're waiting on toppings, I had proposed it whenever we decided to counsel that we go for ten percent and then if we don't do it, then we go down to the seven percent and for the November one. Um, and that's where city administrator is trying to get some direction on what to do so we can move this forward. So we have time to go out and talk to people and stuff.
It's nice, okay, so is that ten percent with the citizen waiver?
Never, no, everybody pays.
Okay, and it's not gonna pass.
I can't hide his. Bernard's waiting to get in, is that, yeah, I'm starting to see that.
There's nobody there.
Can we send him the login info just so that?
I can mail, email it to him, yeah.
Perfect, that'd be great idea. He says he's trying to get in something.
It's the same information as Ruben is gonna be coming on Zoom too.
Sorry, guys.
All right.
You know, thank you. So I didn't realize we had taken it off of the agenda, go ahead.
So if we're gonna do that without the exclusion for the citizens, I don't think it's gonna pass. I mean, they're already bumping at the seven percent, so to bump it up to ten percent, I think this. Uh, they're gonna be asking a lot.
Eric.
I tried to have this conversation the last time we did this. I do not believe it is legally viable to have a citizen's exclusion.
I believe that's, go ahead.
That, that's my understanding as well. For when I had a business, I couldn't give a local discount.
Okay, but I do, um, somebody was, one of the meetings we went to, there was a discussion of where it was only from specific months. So maybe just during our tourist months and then and then. When they're not having it in the winter. And then not have it in the winter for the citizens.
I think that would be harder for them businesses, but I don't know, Courtney.
I'd like to look at how that ten percent um would, would look.
He's got that coming out here.
And just the busy months.
Okay.
You know.
Let's not in just busy month.
No. Yeah, there's really no way to do that. Um, I mean, we could get a general look, because there's no sales tax in Oregon. The math to get to even the estimate was a wonky formula they used based on payroll tax. Which they've done through every other place in Oregon, but not having sales tax information makes it very different.
The other.
The state doesn't drag them.
Correct, no, yes, yeah.
The other thing too is if we don't get something, and so we can support our fire EMS, then we will wind up, the people, us. Yeah, I already had a copy, but she took a copy of mine to give to you guys. But we would have to put a measure out to the citizens again to ask for more money if they want fire or EMS, which when I go across the bridge and get a cup of coffee or grab some croissants from the store, I have to pay sales tax and all kinds of things and I don't, I need it, so I just pay it, so. Everybody's got their information now, yes, thank you.
It is Bernard in there now.
I don't understand why he's up there, what's the rationale for ten?
Yeah. I just, because seven's not gonna be enough.
What, when did that happen?
Yeah, because how much are we taking out of the general funds for fire EMS?
Um. Two hundred and fifty thousand, top of my head, I mean, seven is a good chunk. And it'll solve all of our issues, it'll get us going in the right direction. Um, ten will definitely get us there.
It would help us get our equipment and things too, I mean, I'm not opposed either way.
At seven, we can provide a stable um competitive salary and put money towards facility maintenance, put money towards uh down payments or annual payments towards new vehicles. Ten percent will do all of that plus more and hire a training captain, some other person to help with uh both being our calls and administrative tasks to help Chief Logan. I mean, that's kind of like the dream list.
When did that change, sorry, you know?
What?
When did we change from seven to ten percent?
We haven't, we haven't. This is just a discussion.
A discussion.
I hadn't mentioned it whenever we said, know that we weren't gonna pay the fifteen thousand to put it on the ballot in November. I hadn't made a mention of it, so he just wanted some direction on what you guys wanted, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, Jordan, do you know what other towns do it? I know Cannon Beach and Lincoln City and Ashland.
It is Yehots, Ashland and Cannon Beach, and they're all five percent.
And is there not one in the desert?
No, Bedford does it for diesel, there are a certain amounts.
Just those three, that's it.
Okay, so could we, uh, look at, I mean, cause what was the other one you, no, besides not the coastal ones?
Cannon Beach, Yehots and Ashland.
Ashland, so I mean, Ash, I mean, you know, Ashland's a lot bigger.
Yeah.
But can we look at their numbers and see if what happens throughout the year, can we see if they're because to me, they seem like they're more like a summer destination and not so much a winter. And if kind of we can maybe kind of compare and I don't know, I mean.
We should, yeah, I mean, that's what council wants to look at.
Cause to me, like, the beach is just like an all around here thing, I more so in the summer, I would imagine. But um, I just, I just feel like we, I don't know.
Okay, Bernard.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, sorry about the tech problems.
That's okay.
So I would entertain a ten percent, but I think we should discuss, I don't think all that should go to fire. I think if we go ten percent, then we should consider some fire and maybe some to police services. If you look at our revenue challenges and our funding challenges, general fund always uh is, is, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's uh, it's in certain, in perpetuity as a challenge. And we just don't have the property tax base to meet our general fund obligations. Well, what we do have is a very robust tourism uh uh tourism industry that comes and visits our towns and frankly uses those general services, general fund service owners, and we get nothing from them. So I, you know, if we want to go to ten, then I think we should open, open up the uh, the potential uses of the money to both fire and police. And then frankly, I think maybe that's a good selling point. Um, but I, what, what, I guess I want everyone to keep in mind is it does impact the restaurants. You are pressing on their margins when you have a sales tax. And um, you know, it's not, they would argue you're not being business friendly by doing this. And what we would push back, go, we understand that, but we're trying to be general fund friendly. You know, we have critical services that are underfunded, how do we do that? Well, taxing our tourists is a good way to do that, and that's always gonna be my response when they say you're not being business friendly. It's like I'm open to other ideas on how to raise revenue, but we don't have a lot of options, and this makes a lot of sense.
So in the first chart in the packet, um, the first column is the percentage tax. The second column is estimated revenue. The third column is how much um the general fund will stop giving to the fire department. So for each half a percent increase above seven, an additional ten percent is withheld from the general fund. So at ten percent, the total revenue's five eighteen, two hundred and forty thousand will be kept in general fund, but the fire department will still get a two hundred and seventy eight thousand more than they're currently getting, even with general fund supported. Down seven percent, that numbers three sixty two total, hundred and eighty kept in general fund and additional hundred and eighty for the fire department. Hopefully that makes sense, because it made sense in my head.
Mayor, real quick, did that get emailed out? Cause I don't, I don't have what you guys are looking at.
No.
No.
Yeah, in September.
Oh, you're looking from the, okay.
Yeah.
All right, if I, if I pulled up that old staff report, I can look at these numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Courtney.
Um, I, I understand the math. Can, I, so looking at the five percent, the estimated revenue from that five percent would be two hundred and fifty nine thousand? Right?
Correct.
And then current additional funding from the general fund, what, what is that column? So there's one. The third column, right, right.
Yeah.
But what, what is that?
So it'd be subtracting that current additional funding. So two hundred and fifty nine would go towards the fire department, hundred and eighty would be, would be withheld. That currently goes from the general fund to the fire department. The fire department would make an additional seventy nine thousand dollars.
So the, the general fund arguments the fire EMS.
Yeah.
But so that, then, um, that's how much less the general fund would send.
So that's, that's how much the general fund would be able to keep.
They would be able to keep themselves, because they're racing.
Right, yeah, it makes sense in my head.
I, I get it.
Current additional funding.
So of the, let me just clarify real fast, of the two hundred and fifty nine thousand, out of that, a hundred and eighty thousand of that stays in general fund, basically?
No.
No.
No, those are two separate pots.
Oh.
The hundred and eighty thousand goes from general fund to the fire department to make it whole right now.
Right now.
We would stop giving that to the fire department.
Okay.
So they'd have general fund and have an additional hundred and eighty thousand.
Uh huh.
The two hundred and fifty nine thousand would go to the fire department.
Okay.
Tracking out the hundred and eighty, we're not giving them, they would be in the black seventy nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so, okay.
So I think, if I understand you correctly, this is your kind of rebuttal to Bernard's.
Correct, yes.
Where this point is, is that if we're doing ten percent, it actually is giving two hundred and forty thousand dollars to the general fund or alternatively sixty thousand dollars more is going to the general fund than it would have been instead of some correct rate.
Yeah.
And sixty thousand dollars would cover a portion of the police.
Yeah.
I do think that, I, I like what Bernard had to say, I just wanted to kind of clarify what I thought I understood you were saying and why. Um, but I like Bernard's point though of saying that this could be used for fire and EMS uh as well as police, I think would really get form broad support. So I feel like those are big concerns that many, you know, residents have expressed is they want to see the police here more, we want more presence, but.
Well, sure. Courtney.
When, when did the police get, hold on to this, I'm sorry.
Just now, just now from him.
Bernard.
Bernard was advocating for saying, let's do ten percent, but he was saying, let's instead of limiting it so that all the money is going to fire EMS, the reality is some of that money go towards the general fund to pay for police.
Please.
So that all the ten percent go into a fire.
Out of the general, yeah, that, that was, that was where I was getting stuck, because I was like, the, the stats, the money that we would be collecting from the stats is only going.
No, that's no.
Suggesting this, I'm a bit, he, he's suggesting that it come out of what we save in the general fund.
No, I'm just saying, and that, that, yeah, so now you're tracking with the, like, the whole, exactly, so, yeah. That was, that was uh, Jordan's point was that the money, we don't need to say that the money is gonna be going to the general fund, because actually, he said ten percent is saving the general fund two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is.
That way it all is going to the fire.
Yeah, probably, we all understand.
Yeah, okay, yes, this, this is money for the fire department, and as much as we all love Chief Logan, the fire department is bankrupting the general fund, and it needs to change, there, there's no way.
Fire chief, have you been around to different businesses and people and stuff in the community, what's your feeling? Do you think they're totally against it? I mean, do you think they have an understanding?
We've had some preliminary conversations, have been like formal sit down with the packet yet, but a lot of them are wanting to see what the packet looks like and kind of how the program works. Now that I have that and now that it's off the ballot, I can start that process of like actually scheduling a a sit down appointment with the business owners, instead of just seeing them, you know, go out to dinner and we chat about it a little bit um and kind of show them the program and kind of how, how it's gonna work and what they really feel about it, so I can tell them.
Do you feel like we would benefit from having like a meeting with all the businesses that wants to save on time, your time and our time? Any other?
Just conversations I have with people, you know, whenever I have an opportunity to talk to, everybody, Dave is probably the one I talk to from Thunder Island, so I feel like they are, they sell in volume, probably more than a lot of the retailers in town, so I want to read, get a misfeeling on this. And one of the questions he brought up was, well, how do we, you know, if you, we, we really are estimating how much it's gonna bring in based off of vague numbers from, you know, placeur.ai, you know, really, we, we, we don't really have hard numbers. And so we set a rate, and what if we end up collecting too much? Can the rate go backwards was one of the questions that we had. Um, you know, what if we're just over collecting, what if we don't need to set aside some margin?
What if we, if it was enough or too much, and then we could not ask the people for the measure again, you know?
What do you mean?
For the fire EMS measure that we pay on our bill now.
No, we're, we're gonna get rid of that.
It comes up for election again.
Yeah, but that, yeah. But that's income.
I know, but I was saying, if we wind up saying that we're getting too much money, then we could say, hey, we won't do this again.
It's a way to make the.
Yeah.
Losers pay for that.
To, to Counselor Happy's point, um, the charter specifically states that a voter is required for a new increase to a tax, council can decrease it without voter approval from minors, that I'll double, we'll double check that with the city attorneys.
Wouldn't mean that we wouldn't be able to raise it again, though.
Correct, yes, so there, there'd be that trade off. Do we let the EMS be expired, however future council wants to address that.
But I, and I guess, sorry, I didn't ever, that was one of the questions that Dave had and didn't have an answer for him on, but it seemed like there was, he was from my memories, he might be supportive and understood the rationale and reason for it. Um, I didn't hear him say, you know, I don't feel like you're being business unfrontly, uh, but I did, one of the concerns was we just said we're taking too much, we adjusted.
Right, Courtney.
Uh, I know we had talked about that the businesses would be putting some of this to cover their overhead expenses for implementing it. Does this, this third sheet um reflect that?
No, none of that takes that.
They get a three percent of, of total collect five percent, oh, five percent, okay.
Five percent of that five percent or five percent.
Of probably.
So if it's a hundred dollars, we get, if we do ten dollars, they get, if we do ten percent, we get ten dollars, and of that ten dollars, they get that percent.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, and it's a monthly thing, right?
Quarterly.
And that's not reflected here?
No.
Do you have an estimate on how much that is?
I could run the numbers really quick.
So there's, we'll be making a little bit of money off of it too.
Well, it works out to like point zero zero three five percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a miniscule, yeah. Um, Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor, so a question for the city administrator, just to drill down into that a little more. If the city was taking in more revenue than needed as a result of the food and beverage tax, what I would like to ask the attorney is, when, when voters approve a um, you know, uh, the, the public safety surcharge, which is on utility bill, um, does it not give us the, the council the right to lower it? But again, if things change, could we, do we not have authority to raise it back to where it was? In my mind, as long as you stay within it, you can lower it as much as you want or eliminate it, uh, unless of course expires, assuming it hasn't expired, and then, but if you need to raise it back up, you can raise it, because you have already given, the, the voters have given you authority to that amount. But I want to confirm that, because I don't want to put us or a future council in a pickle if we lower this thing and then uh the revenues, you know, we have an economic downfall and the revenues aren't showing up, and now we need that revenue from the public safety sur- safety sur- surcharge and, and we've tied our hands or tied the hands of a future council. Uh, so I just want to confirm that, my guess is we could, but I would like the attorney to, to, to weigh in on that, please.
Eric.
I guess my question is, who defines what is too much? And it seems to me a fire engine is a million, is that? So, I mean, to replace our thirty year old fire engine means to raise a million dollars. So being too much seems absurd.
So we got like five more minutes left on work session, and I think you're wanting direction, correct, Jordan?
I mean, it sounds like more discussion is needed, um, but I got the feeling from council the last go around, you all felt rushed, so I wanted to get this discussion going sooner than later.
So what percentage do you guys, do we just keep it what we had in that?
I like seven, seven times too much.
Yeah, I agree. Seven? Okay, I can work with that.
Is there, and then the other was about the measure on the electric bill. What you just wrote down to check.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Bernard.
For what it's worth, I would like, I would like to, one, do a town hall with businesses, as you had suggested, so we can, you know, reduce the burden on the fire chief, and we can, as electives can hear directly from these, 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 these restaurant owners and have that conversation, and in that conversation, I would like to talk about seven and ten. And again, I think we would be well served if we show them, look, guys, here's the general fund challenges we face in police, in fire, and give them a really good appreciation, almost a deep dive in those two operations that we're trying to keep well. And then say, look, if we did ten, these are the things that we could, we could strengthen our fire and our police services. If we do seven, this is where that leaves us. We understand it's a burden on you, how do you feel in a community who has a more robust public fire, public safety and fire, you know, apparatus or a less robust? Does that make you, you know, more secure as a business owner? They might say, hey, more than I think about it, I want the ten, but, but I, I would like to have that conversation. I don't, I don't want to preempt ten if they, if they're open to that.
That gives you the direction.
Uh, yes, so it sounds like stay at seven for now, but a town hall or some kind of caucus group with businesses? Yeah, yeah.
Is this open to residents as well?
I think it should be.
I think it should be.
I think it's all.
Maybe businesses and then you do, so, uh, what's that?
It's a different group, is that what you're thinking there?
That's what I think.
I think you need to have the business community buying in first, and if you don't have that, then what's the point of going to the resident?
That's right, that's a good point.
Yes. So to help it with this, that's, okay. Anything else on this?
I just, I, I think it might be helpful to have a little bit of a timeline, if like, when are we having to have this decided by, and then when are we gonna do these two town halls? Or is that something?
Time, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. A lot of holidays coming up.
Mm hmm. Yeah, maybe we need to start pencil this out, so.
Yeah, that's why I wanted this conversation, yeah.
So, uh, do we want a timeline? Shoot for a month out, weeks out for town hall with the businesses, or do we want to decide that later?
Do we want it before council meeting or at a stand alone thing?
A standalone thing, I think.
We would have to, sorry, we want to be on Monday night that we're not having a council meeting.
Eric.
As much as I would like to be there, I think it needs to be an afternoon thing, I would imagine most business owners are.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm trying to think of which ones actually live in town and.
I think you're right.
Coming at like six o'clock in the evening, that's a busy time.
That's their busy time, yeah. So afternoon, maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
And you guys thinking a month or after the holidays or?
Which I think after holidays is too long, I think, yeah, for the end of the year, we need to get.
I say sooner the better.
Okay, sooner the better, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Early November, yeah.
Okay, we will work on that, thank you, guys. All right.
We got two minutes.
And is YouTube Live working?
Yeah, I'm gonna call Kathy here, see if I can get information real quick. Okay, and then I'm not sure Ruben is gonna be hitting on Zoom, okay, did you send him the link? If it was the correct link that I had gotten, okay.
Sure. Got a quick question for Chief Logan.
Yeah.
We got another minute, um, I know they say, you know, don't, don't, I heard you guys before the eight's hatch, but do you have a plan of action for how you want to allocate this money? Do you have an order of operations on, on Friday and all of that?
Yes.
Would it be possible for council to see a rough draft? I mean, it doesn't have to be super in depth.
Yeah.
Um, but that way, you know, we can go to the community and, and say, look, these, you know, here's, here's the plan.
Yeah.
That'll be next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Did we get anything back on this?
Yeah.
I don't think it's done yet.
Two, he said it was submitted to this, they, or. I'll ask him.
Yeah, no, I don't. Or pause, I'm like, he's trying to get YouTube live up. Did you want to discuss anything when you're here tonight?
I did.
Okay, there's a paper to sign in and a slip to fill out, and then you gotta tell, is it Alina?
Alina.
Alina, Elena. Hopefully I get that right someday, I'll try.
You will.
Okay. You're touching. A little while. I'll find you something with that after, let's go. Technical difficulties. Some of those things have been. Man, I don't know if you can hear me and Bernard, we are trying to get YouTube Live going, John.
Hey, I can hear you fine, do, do we need to sign off?
Um, I don't think so.
No.
Did you send Ruben the?
I did, yeah. So no YouTube, no YouTube thing?
No YouTube Live tonight.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I can hear fine, thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, you guys, all ready?
Yes, we're good.
All right, let's call the order. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Bro call.
Yes. Councilmember Gilman.
Gilman, present.
Gilman. Councilmember Pruitt.
Here.
Councilmember, uh, member Keller.
Here.
And Council, Councilmember Bump. And Councilmember Bump.
Here.
Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Mayor Wood.
Here.
And Jordan Bennett, City Administrator.
I'm usually not.
You got one here.
Yeah, and a Seager.
And Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Right.
All right, additions or amendments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
All right. Adoption of the consent agenda?
The motion to adopt the consent agenda will take place the approval in the action minutes of September twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, and the ratification of the bills in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents. One second.
All right, any discussion? All right, no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Who says nay? All right, adoption of the consent agenda has passed. Getting out of this late. Moving on, appearance of interested citizens to share a variety of perspectives on issues facing our community. You got a couple slips over there, I believe. Close them, guys.
Yeah. And just the one.
Okay, both in New York together, okay. All right. Marva and Joanne, you guys want to come up?
Sure.
Thank you for coming.
So, I'm Marva Janney. I'm a member of the Confederated Tribes of Celest Indians of Oregon and a resident of Cascade Locks for almost fifty years. Um, I also worked here at City Hall for about seven years in the nineteen eighties. It's been today, uh, that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, also known as Columbus Day by some, as we live in an area that is rich in native culture demonstrated by the hundreds of native neighbors who practice the century-old methods of fishing from scaffolds, uh, selling their products at local stands and who operate local businesses as to the rhythms. My friend, Joanne Wittemer, and I are here to talk about land acknowledgements, a term that has become more common over the last ten years or so. In current times that have intense divisions, sometimes times that are intentionally divided, we have an opportunity in a land acknowledgement to take a step toward healing, repairing past injustices, and acknowledging neighbors who have survived centuries of oppression. Some might say we can't change history, and of course, we can't. But sincerely acknowledging the forced removal, often time after time, to strange, arid, worthless lands because someone with more power wanted the lush pasture, the minerals buried there, or another benefit of a particular tribal area, that we can begin the process of healing and justice. And I'd like to read just a few words from acknowledgements. It's not a super difficult process, but, um, from Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church in St. Vincent, Washington, where I attend, um, also from the Columbia River Gorge Commission and the City of Denver, Fallujan. From Shepherd of the Hills, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but "The people of these sovereign nations have a vibrant living culture and run contemporary governments. Together, we honor and continue to walk alongside our native siblings as we work towards truth, reconciliation, and healing." And from Columbia River Gorge Commission, "We offer this land acknowledgement in gratitude for all those who have come before us and those cultivating respectful relationships today and into the future in recognition of the historical and ongoing legacy of colonialism and a commitment to work together toward a more just and equitable future in protection of our shared connection to these lands and waters." "The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is a traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequalities and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver. So, Joanna and I are here to urge this council to follow the examples of other cities, counties, universities, and private organizations to develop a similar message to our indigenous neighbors with care, respect, and thoughtfulness towards justice and healing. It's not going to cost us anything to do this financially or otherwise." Thanks for listening.
We'd like to offer our services and ask the city council if you might put it on your agenda at the next meeting to maybe provide, uh, provide, to think about having a committee to work on this and, uh, and really look at this. This, uh, land acknowledgement, uh, started in Australia and then went, of course, to New Zealand and to Canada and, um, and there, um, there are resources on the internet from Oregon State University about making a land acknowledgement. And then there's another group called Raven, and they have a packet on. On the internet also that can help you, uh, you know, we just don't want to do it. We want to work on it and work so that everybody is involved, that wants to be involved in this and then, uh, see where the city council wants to take this. And we're, of course, we're urging you to have a land acknowledgement. So, we're happy to work with you if you would consider having a committee work with, work on this because we think it's important.
Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all.
That was the only slipper, I guess, and nothing via email.
Okay, public hearings? None?
No public hearings.
All right, action items, six A, performance review of city administrator. And I, um, wanted to be able to have a, uh, execute an open and honest discussion regarding the job performance and select evaluation and how everything's set up, public meeting laws and stuff. The only way I'm able to do that is if you guys here. Um, but I'm gonna go down, kind of down my list of things and then I would like to be able to go around to council on you guys. If you have any concerns or anything that, or something that you don't agree with or whatever, please feel free to talk about it. Um, first of all, the audits. The audits are a big thing. I ran, uh, for the audits, saying that we would get them done. Um, we're two audits behind. We'll be three audits behind in December. And um, I want us to be able to give a stricter timeline instead of a line that we just keep crossing out or like a goal date that they must get done by. Um, I would like all of our information from our city administrator to be factual with dates and times. Um, and follow-ups. Uh, we need to know what the communication is. I guess, um, some of the problem is, is that the, um, city administrator has different reasons for why the audit's late and the auditors have different reasons. I've asked the auditors to come to this meeting tonight and they said it would be better served for them to come. They're probably coming in November when the next audit is completed and then they can answer all council questions and all that. I also asked them if I could share emails and they asked me, "Please not to share the emails. That way, they can be more detailed and, uh, can let us know." Um, so that's my stance on the audits and I'd like some feedback on that. And they need immediate response and immediate action, our audits do. I can't keep just changing the dates on them. We've got to figure out what the problem is and get it done. And I know that we've had people that are well-qualified that have actually volunteered to come in here and help and that are able to come in and help get information and we've been unable to utilize them or that person. So, I don't know what we need to do, but I need council's direction on what we're gonna do because just sweeping this under the rug is not acceptable. Um, the other thing that I had is per ordinance thirty point one five C in here. Um, it talks about the, um, let me get it real quick. It talks, that ordinance tells us "The administrator shall have an exercise in general charge, supervision, and control over all non-elected city employees and their work with power to transfer an employee from one department to another to the end that the utmost efficiency shall be attained from all departments and shall designate the duties employees shall perform and all matters pertaining to the work for the city. The city council may, by motion, resolution, or ordinance, provide rules under which the administrator shall exercise said general supervision. And the administrator shall report to the mayor and the city council for their action only. Any recommendations for hiring and discharging employees? Save and accept that the administrator is hereby granted the power to hire additional city employees whose services are necessary to public works and utility departments in the event of an emergency." And on June thirtieth, this council got an email about someone being let go without council knowledge. And so, that is part of the, um, contract that the city administrator has in section three point two A. Um, so I wanted to bring that. And then, um, I have the Concord Creek Bridge on here because somehow we're gonna wind up owing close to two hundred thousand dollars after we hired a lobbyist to get us a million for this million-dollar loan. And, um, I've met with city administrator today to kind of figure out how that loan is because I see a contract that we signed for one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand and four hundred dollars. Um, but then the ODOT loans say it's a million ten. So, I guess we got more money at the time. The contract was for, the bid we got was nine hundred thousand, so we went ahead and got the loan for a million, thinking we'd have too much money. Well, when we had to redo, move the line for the second time because we put it in the wrong spot and all that, we're enduring some fees. So, it's looking like you, and it will come up in his report later under the, um, utility or the director, uh, about how much we will wind up paying for that loan. And it's looking like over a hundred thousand. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, um, was the pay raises for the city administrator and the staff without council approval. There, just because the budget was approved doesn't mean the pay raises are approved and evaluations and stuff. And then, working hours and days. This position previously was a Monday through Friday job and the contract's very clear that it takes whatever it takes to get the job done. So, it's not a forty-hour a week job necessarily. It's whatever it takes to get the job done. So, I would like some feedback on that. And then I would like, because I know, uh, Casell, I've heard a lot of complaints about Casell, and I think we've even looked at getting some other software or something and it's way too expensive. I would like council to, like, make sure that our Casell software is all up to date and that the training for the employees is done. All right, so whatever we got to do to get that done. And then, last but not least, um, in the few meetings that I've attended with city administrator and in just general conversation, um, I would like our city presented with a positive light and not with a negative light. I don't care if our ordinance are old or they don't work or whatever. Please don't go out in public and sell us that way, you know? Or if the schools are bad in our area, don't sell it that we have the worst schools in Cascade Locks or, you know? So, that's kind of where I'm coming from and I'm just trying to bring it so we can have an open and honest discussion. So, city administrator is very clear of his expectations and what we expect and then we're all on the same playing field. Um, I want to let council members know that if you have any information that you're needing from the city, whether they're documents or whatever, please go through city administrator. It makes it less confusing on staff. That way, they don't think they have seven bosses. So, I told Jordan I would make that very clear and I, as the mayor, will also do that for Jordan. Um, I will go through him for information. So, um, given that, um, we, and I put it under an action item, but so we would have, we could move somewhere with this and not just discuss it. So, I will entertain council.
Are you wanting feedback on?
We have to have a motion.
A motion.
Before we can discuss anything because it's an action item. So, whether you want a work plan, we want to make it adamant about the audit.
I'll make a motion. I move that we take the feedback from this evening and collaboratively turn that into a work plan for our city administrator. I think it's, uh, that'd be helpful.
I'll second that. So, we're gonna try to work on a work plan. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so, this is a tough thing.
Well, yeah, let's take a vote.
No, no, we're not really going to do that. I'm sorry. We got a motion and a second. Now, we can discuss.
Ten months, sorry.
So, I know this is a surprise for some people seeing this on the agenda, but, you know, the mayor was, you know, we talked and I know that she's, it's a tough position for many of us. You know, we can't just pick up the phone and talk to every counselor. And so, the mayor's trying to get feedback from all of us so that we can help Jordan be successful. Uh, my comment, when she and I talked before privately about this, was how challenging it is when you go to work and you don't know your bosses. And you've got, you know, if you've ever been in that position where you've got three different bosses and you get told three different things, it is so frustrating. And so, our city administrator is in a position where he's got seven bosses. And so, my hope from this evening is that we can walk out of this with one voice for him so that he knows, you know, where he stands with us and, you know, I guess what we're looking for, so.
Thank you.
I think so. You want to speak for input, Ben? Yeah, I want everything to be open and honest and so he knows exactly what the expectations are and we do too.
So, some things that I would like to see in a work plan would be, um, that, uh, communication on the, uh, the evaluation that we did. Communication was, um, mentioned many, many times, not just by one counselor. It was mentioned by a majority of the council and I think the communication, I feel like I don't get all of the information. I only get the information that I asked for and I feel like that there's more information that I can be getting. Um, I feel like, um, there should be a little bit more proactivity and just getting as much information to sell the point as possible. I, uh, I feel like there's a lot of, um, back and forth, but I always feel like something possibly cracks and I don't get the information that I need to make a full-rounded decision. I feel like it's, um, narratorized. I feel like there's a narrative that's, that is being pushed forward instead of just giving the information and letting us make a decision. I understand there's a direction that you want to go, but we all have to, uh, we live here and we all make the decision based on our citizenry and, um, what we think that they will endure or take to. Um, I also would like to see some, uh, hit spending tracking, track, a track on spending because there have been several times that, um, and am I supposed to just hammer my dressing up? There have been, okay, there have been several. And am I supposed to just him or am I addressing it? So there okay, there have been several times that we have uh. That the spending has lost its tracking like the CFAO. Um. And is on, he was honest. He presented to us that it would have gone if it was spent, he's there more was spent on it than. Uh, he had thought and it was the same thing with the brush cutting um earlier this year. And um, what else? Yeah, and uh, yeah, and then also in his contract, it states that he's supposed to be giving expenses for reports on um. What he's where he's traveling to and the different conferences he's going to and I, we haven't seen, we haven't seen one of those. I don't, I don't think I don't think I've seen one at council ever. Um. And and just and and other to carry on uh to the back of what. The mayor said, I I feel like. Um. I. He, you're very, he's very energetic. He has a lot of energy and I appreciate that. I appreciate that. He and he's um and it's. Uh, a youthfulness. I'm sure that myself and being an old timer kind of gets. Uh, sometimes, but uh sometimes I feel like. Uh, things have been worked on behind the scene a lot. Before they've been presented to council to see if that's even a direction that council wants to go. And um. We talk about time and uh restraints and all of that and I think that it should, things should be presented to the council first before. It's moved on in a direction by city staff because it might not be something we want to do. It might be something totally, or it might be something we do want to do or maybe have a different. Direction of that particular thing. Uh, and. Yeah, other than that, and a big uh, and I agree with the forty hour thing. It's this is, I I don't want it to be. An eighteen hour job, but I also know that it's definitely more than, I don't think that there's ever been any counselor, city administrator, excuse me, that. It's been a forty hour job for. And I I would just like to see some more like uniformity, like in public, like when we're at meetings or stuff. You know, lots of other towns sit together in group meetings, but. We're kind of like all dispersed or broadened. It just feels like we're, we're not getting along. And I I don't want that perception to be out there because Cascade Locks has enough. Um, problems with its reputation, so. But that's what I have to have.
Amy, Marion? I have a few um. One of it is is the audits um. And I don't feel that we are doing what we need to do uh to get the audits done. I would like to see our finance officer or director, however you want to call her, to be in our office five days a week or four days a week. Um, and get these things done. I don't understand how come they're not getting done. But it is very important and if we get write-ups on this, i- it's not good for us. Um. I think um. Things need to be brought before council first too. Um, I also feel that we're not getting the full message. Um. But I really am concerned about the audits and there's no reason why we can't get them done. And um, i- it's not that difficult. I've done fifteen of them. It's not that difficult.
Um, during your opening comments, uh, it's very. Reading your staff report. Can you elaborate? I know that they they asked not to have their emails read. But can you provide kind of some general, you know, I just were just maybe summarize, I guess. What's, you you said that you wanted to get factual information from this administrator. I'm wondering, what did you? Hear that made you feel like perhaps we're not getting factual information?
Um.
You speak in generalities without.
I can. I can um. What I've heard many times is that. They, and the first thing that I guess to understand is that we're doing multiple audits because we're doing the ones for the. Uh, wastewater treatment plant and all that. So them are all individual audits, which Shantae explained that to me. Um, and what I hear from. City staff is that um, they're too busy. They're sending too many requests or they can't find it. Um. Uh, now they're in their busy season of their audit, so they're not able to do it. And what I'm hearing from the auditors is quite the opposite. One example would be they asked for information in January and they did not receive anything until March. Um, uh, and currently. Um, they are waiting on the cash. We are waiting for a listing of outstanding deposits at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The city has provided them now, but has not provided a detailed list for us for them to test. So there's many things that are missing that are, should be easy to get. But we're not getting that, you know, and it just goes on and on. Uh, we haven't been doing um inventory. We um, I got that they were working really good getting information into auditors. And then we had um the new lady start, then we stopped because we had to do training. So. It's always something and the auditors, and you guys will be able to talk to them when they come, but it's. A lot the city's fault.
So from what you're describing, it sounds like we're kind of getting, you know, each person's pointing the finger at the other person saying, you're the one that's holding up. But until now, we've only been getting ones out of that story.
Right.
And that's kind of what I thought I understood or heard you both saying to some extent that you felt like some of the information would have been filtered or spun or twisted. And maybe you're not getting the full picture. Is that?
Well, I I can give some examples of what I was talking about, what, you know, working on things before presenting them to council, like the cutting the police fund. Me funding that one year in budget that, I mean, there was no discussion with the council. That was just something arbitrarily done to the budget. And then we all had to backpedal and re uh reconstitute that. And then the electric department and the WASCO thing, I don't know, I don't know what happened. Uh, he said, she said, they said, I don't, there's something, something happened that that it just was a very bizarre situation that we had here. When WASCO came and was trying to get us on board to sign on to their program. And then uh, and then to add to that, I think the Fox, the Fox hiring, I felt like that was kind of um pushed from. Behind or in front of or something. I don't, I don't know what the exact term is, but.
Are we done?
Yeah.
That's good. I'm ready.
Um, something. Something that we might be able to look at um or work towards, I I feel like addresses both of these issues, you know, where where are you spending your time? And 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 what are you paying your attention to? Um, every job I've ever worked on, I have to account for how much time I spend on each project. And I think that's, that's pretty typical. So that way you know, A, where your money's going, you know, what, how much you're investing in a project before it even starts, like how much, how much. Type, energy and money have we put towards something? Um, I I don't think it's completely unreasonable to ask what you're working on and how how long. And it would address, it'd get a little more transparency and address those issues.
And I forgot to mention, we do have Ruben on, Ruben Cleveland, our city attorney online too. I've asked him to attend so we had questions or whatever.
Greetings, council. Yes, I'm I'm here if you need me, but otherwise um I'm just gonna lurk and let you have your discussion.
Thank you, Ruben. Okay, Benar.
Thank you, mayor. So just a few comments on this. If I could, I would like to start the city attorney with a question. And that's regarding uh uh salary raises and hiring. So can you just clarify, is it in the charter or where is it? That says council would have, we approve a budget. And then it was, it was my understanding that after the budget's approved. Then that gives the city administrator the authority to make individual decisions on who gets a step increase or not. And they auto, that that budget. Just across the board approves includes a a COLA. So everyone gets a COLA if we approve the budget. But individual steps would be done by the city administrator or in this new structure by a director like the. You know, once we get the uh the city light director, uh he he or she would then evaluate those two employees working for him. And make the call on whether that person gets a a step increase. That's my understanding, but it sounds like the mayor was saying something different. Can you clarify where that authority lies?
Mm-hmm.
Just start with that one, please.
Ultimately, it lies with the council. I mean, if the council wants to say, look, once we set a budget. Then the administrator just is expected to work within that budget. That would be an expectation for the council to set. Um, merely setting a budget doesn't necessarily mean that you're conveying spending authority. Or um or wage authority uh to go along with that budget. Um, for example, if you were to set a budget for equipment for the electrical system or public works. Doesn't mean that they can go out and buy a new backhoe just because there's a budget amount. Um, so it it really is up to the council to set those parameters. Um, on whether the budget is just carte blanche authority to not spend over it, but do whatever you want. Or um, or do things like approve wage increases.
Okay, so yeah, I I I understand. We have our purchasing policy and it has purchasing authority for directors, for the city administrator. And then what else does it get? I'm not questioning that. Uh, and we, there's, that's in black, that's in writing that says where the the uh uh city administrator's authority is and where, you know, and 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 beyond that. But is there in, is there somewhere in writing that says council approves individual employee pay raises? Like the purchasing policy of the city? That's what I'm asking.
No, there's not.
Okay, alright, so so that's my first question. And then regarding um. Uh, hiring, uh, she quoted a chapter and I and I, it went too fast for me, so I kind of. It wasn't, it wasn't clear to me. Is, are you reading it just like the mayor is that? Any hire has to go before council before uh that person can be given an offer letter?
Correct, yes, there's a, there's a city ordinance. It's in uh chapter thirty point fifteen of our municipal code. That lays out the authority and the limitations on the city administrator. And she was directly quoting from that that says that the um, that the city. Uh, uh, council is vested with the power to hire and fire.
Okay, great. So so on, when it, just to respond to that, that that line of commentary. It would be my preference that council not wait, not be required to weigh in on individual employee. Step increases and and promotions that be handled at the city administrator level. Uh, but uh, but per the ordinance, then yeah, all hires would come to us uh for final approval. So I just want to make my two cents there. Now, regard to audits. Uh, everyone's heard me, you know, beat my hair on fire when it comes to audits. And so I I don't want to reiterate that, but I just want to express why to me this is a a point of of uh. Uh, of not meeting my expectations. And and before I get into that. Uh, i- anyone who looked at the review I did for the city administrator and when we just did our evaluations. Will see that I scored him by and large, uh, you know, around a four. So he has met my expectations in the previous evaluation period and that's why uh I gave him that score. And I I am, I am generally pleased with his performance. Let me just start by saying that. Now, having said that, there are some issues that I'm not pleased and the audit progress is one of them. And, you know, I asked him to give me an updated audit beyond what was in the initial staff report for the packet. And he sent that as an email and I've got that up here. I just want to review. So for the twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three audit, its proposed start date was twelve seventeen twenty-four. And you can see how initially we thought we'd get it done in six months. So five thirty should be finished. Then six twenty-seven, now we're looking at eleven twenty-eight. So this audit is almost taking a year to complete. And anyone who knows about the audit process, they generally take about six months because. You know, you close your books when you adopt the new budget in 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 July one. And then you have to get your audit uh 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 put together and completed by December. That's a five, five and a half month process. This last audit, as as you can, as I, as I noted, took twelve months. And you can see when I, when I, when we see kind of this unfold, it's like, oh my God, we're never going to get caught up. If it takes us a year to do each of these out of date audits. So this is problematic for me and uh what I, I asked uh uh. What I, I, I can't remember who I talked, I've talked to two council members about this question uh since the packets came out. And what I was suggesting is we need to get the auditors in here to have a very honest conversation. On where the breakdown is. Why did this last audit take almost twelve months to complete? Where were the breakdowns in in uh in in productivity and and, you know, in progress? In getting this thing done. And then I want to just, I want to go to, go to like, you know, you know, like a a bull on a horn. I I I want to figure out, I want to fix those things that that caused this eleven month process to occur for twenty-two, twenty-three. And uh, the la, the second thing I I will share with the council is if the auditor goes, look, we're doing as fast as we can. We 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 couldn't have improved that process, even if we wanted to. Then I would like the council to consider hiring an additional auditor to help us, to maybe do these things in parallel. What we can do, you know, to prep for the the one that's that's not done. Uh, have that prep work going so we can get to a reach a certain point. And then, you know, maybe hand off that work to our 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 current auditor. And then we can get these things caught up. But again, where we're going now, we're never going to get caught up. So I just want to make those comments regarding the audit. I'm not hap, I'm not satisfied uh with our our performance there. And that's something that I I would like the work plan to make in clear uncertain terms or no certain terms, how we, how we address that. Okay, I've got a few other things here. Let me just get back to my notes. Um. So, you know, as far as uh, you know, ownership, I feel like one way to improve the operations of this city. Is to have the city administrator in the office five days a week. And I would argue, not only that, I think the admin staff should be in there five days a week. Uh, admin being finance, you know, the finance or the uh uh the 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 utility billing clerk. The the front receptionist, the the planning clerk, all those staff who are who are overhead administration. Uh, if if I could get my way, they would all be in there working eight hour days, five days a week. And I think that would improve not only our our service uh delivery to our citizens, but also. Uh, the 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 needs of of what council's looking for in the, in the delivery of 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 the city's business. So uh I I support that. And then, you know, to speak to one of the the comments that was made regarding kind of prioritization. I I think there's, there's some merit here. Uh, I think the the um. The WASCO County PUD presentation is an excellent example. Uh, I would like to think that uh if we were to rewind the clock and I was sitting in Jordan's shoes. And I looked at all the issues I had on my, I had a, you know, I got a city hall with a roof linking. I've got a solar project on 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 the fire station. I've got a a fire department that's underfunded. I've got audits that are, that are three behind. If if I had all those things on a plate and WASCO says, hey, we want to pitch taking over your electric utility, I'd like to think my response would be. Hey, I really liked that thought, but this is not the time. We, I, we have much bigger fish to fry in the city of Cascade Locks. Please hold that thought and don't bring that to us. And, you know, I I I, you know, we rely on a city administrator to make those discretionary calls. And I don't think that call was made accurately. I think, I'm not sure what what, you know, what. Lured him in, but I think that was an error in judgment on the city administrators to take on that and divert his attention. And of course, council time and everything else was involved with that. So I think there's some areas to to improve on that as well. Um, and the last thing, and and, you know, uh, one of the council members, I have talked about this just in other occasions. Uh, but it's kind of this idea of CEO ownership, you know, when you're the city administrator, you're the chief executive for the city. And it's not a five day a week job. It's really a six plus week job. And inevitably, uh, you're going to get yanked in on things on the weekend. And that shouldn't be a surprise. That should be an expectation. I don't, I'm not sure that we've seen that type of ownership, uh, in the last, call it six months. And I would like that to change. I would like that attitude to be adopted by our city administrator. And I think, you know, uh, I think that's what we pay for him for, and I think that's what's required of this job. And, um, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm making a, you know, a, a, a comment to that effect. Okay. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Seeger. And, uh, Keith?
Just kind of to tie into what Seeger was just sharing and, um, and conversations that I've had with Mr. Bennett, I've heard him say for better or worse, when I leave Cascade Locks, you know, I put work behind him. And, you know, I think that that's a very healthy thing to do in some ways, you know, like, you know, but at the same time, I think that when you're a, a high level executive in a new organization, you have to have some balance. And, you know, I, I don't expect that Jordan's working side at side typing off email replies. But I do think it's appropriate that there's this monitoring that's happening over the weekend of incoming messages to see if there's anything that's really important that's, needs to be addressed. But when I've been in that position on my weekend, I'm still checking email, but it also gives me kind of an idea of what I'm going to walk into on Monday morning. So I can be efficient when I get there. Um, and so, I mean, and I've talked about this with you directly, you know. So this isn't something I'm just sharing here out of the blue. This is stuff that we've talked about. Um, but it's really that ownership and, yeah, I, I really, I, I'm not a big person on, you know, micromanaging what somebody's doing. I'm more about managing the results. But the results that we're getting is, is released to the auditor or sub auditor. Um, the ARPA funding was disappointing and I felt like entirely avoidable. Um, you know, the emails didn't get bounced. Those email accounts were still here. We just didn't see them because those account mailboxes weren't being monitored. And, you know, that's something that's come up since the review. We've talked about this and I think we put place, you know, steps in place to rectify that. Um, and I, I'm trying to give you some sort of clear communication about what I'm looking for, but it's really about being able to perceive problems before they occur and course correct before they get to us. And the reality of you trying to manage, you know, not just your own email inbox that's already overwhelming, but also Mary Ann's email that was still, had emails coming in, Gordon's email, Dave's old email. You know, it's just, it was unrealistic. And, you know, I'm not, you know, I think it was unfair to put you in that position. But I feel like you kind of put yourself in that position. And that's where I feel like those are the, the kind of the high level thinking and ownership and being able to see that this isn't sustainable and, you know, share that with council. Sure. I, I don't know who you talk to about that, you know, how do I get out of this? Um, but just not checking the, those other inboxes puts us in a, a tough position. And ultimately we got it all taken care of, but it's not just the results that are important. It's, it's to some extent, you know, how did we get there? And that was a really messy kind of resolution that had to, you know, a lot of kind of last minute reporting that had to be done and it could have been avoided. And when I hear you saying that there's emails that we're getting from the auditors that are not being responded to, it makes me wonder about your email management and what tools and techniques, you know, I think I thought even other councilor commented that when that ARPA thing came through, they emailed you on a Thursday and they got a response on Friday. When I asked you about, when did you get that email? So it was timestamped on Thursday, but I didn't see it till Monday. Yeah. And so that makes me wonder how is your organizational, you know, in your inbox organized? Is it chronological or is it by sender? You know, so are you looking for emails from Tiffany or Eric, but not necessarily paying attention to other stuff that's coming in? Makes this done from a sender, you know, so if you need resource on how to juggle, you know, your inbox, you know, I'd be open to, you know, do you need training, you know, what can we help you with? I want to see you successful, but that sort of stuff can't slip through the cracks, you know, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
And can I add to that? I mean, I think that was a holiday, was it a holiday weekend that all that happened too?
I don't remember the holiday. No, it was just a Thursday and then normally you don't have birthdays, you know, Friday.
To me, it didn't feel like it was being taken serious. It's like, oh, well, I'm, I'm off work now. I'll take care of it Monday when I get back in. And I, it just didn't feel like it was this serious thing, which it, it seemed very serious to me. It seemed like, I don't think it really needed to be taken care of. And it would have been one of those weekends that probably I would have been putting in extra hours to try and get it taken care of. But so, sorry to interrupt, but yeah, that's a good point.
So that's all I had. Yeah. It's just, uh, a pride in ownership and, you know, asking for help.
Mayor, can I have one more thing?
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, regarding communication, here, here's what I would like to propose. I would like to propose a more in-depth city administrator report. Again, I, I encourage you to look at what I used to do. And as I was thinking about it, I did that, I believe it was once every two weeks, not every week. And then that would reduce the, the work requirement. You do want every two weeks, but it's a much more thorough and in-depth process. And I promise you, if you sit down and do it, it, it will serve you. It's going to be work, but you're going to give council so much a better appreciation on what you did last week to, you know, respond to one of the council members' comments. Uh, we do not know what your inbox looks like and all the things that are, that are demanding your attention and time. Only you know that. And a, and a proper report would show us what you're doing, but also how you're moving things that we care about forward, you know? I was so thrilled to hear that the ADU, uh, language is moving forward. I think that was in a report. I can't remember where that, I, I read that. But that's very exciting to, again, as someone who's hell bent on housing, to see that thing moving forward. So a, 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 once every two weeks, very thorough, uh, uh, city administrator report. Uh, again, you, you can use my format or, or, or just pick what you want out of it. But I, I, I tried to be very thorough on that. And then again, that helps us know what you're doing, but also helps us see that you're driving council's priorities in a positive and forward motion. And, you know, that's how you, you inspire, inspire trust and that's how we have a good relationship. Um, I think that's what every city, city manager or administrator owes to their council to try to keep that communication as clear as possible. So we, we have, we have good faith that the city's priorities are being worked on in a very deliberate and, and, and consistent manner.
Right. Um, I hear a lot of frustration and complaints and pieces of wisdom, but I do not hear anything quantifiable. When you write an action plan, it has to be yes or no, or a score. Like, I mean, what if, I mean, are we developing the plan today? Uh, that's my, or are we just taking feedback? And then who's going to develop the plan? And how is that plan going to get developed and written? And how is that process going? Because it has to be big communication. How do you define? Do you want to?
Yeah. I was just going to suggest maybe the attorney could, maybe the attorney could.
Yeah, I was going to let him finish.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I just saw a hand going off on our side.
I was just, I'd like to be next.
Um, second of all, I, I, going to the report and I, I get the ideas and the knowledge that you want, but I, I guess I don't know how to put this politely, so I'm just going to say it. When we, when we ask city administrator Bennett, what seasonal landscaping is, we have to understand that that's that, like, I don't know, that's time, like, yes, you want this report. That's a huge fatty, a cumbersome amount of time. You also have to equate the time that you're going to take away from him doing all the other projects to do simple research on your own. Seasonal landscaping would have been a three second Google search to define what seasonal landscaping is. So I guess my hesitancy is I, 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 we have to take on some of this burden as council to realize the, the time that Jordan spends on these accounts and responding to our emails and realize that an hour of his time is probably seventy-five dollars-ish. Maybe a little bit more with all purrs and everything wrapped in there, probably more in the hundred. And so when he has to spend twenty minutes responding to what is seasonal landscaping, that's time taken away from everybody else. And so when we write this work plan, I want it certain that we're setting him up for success, not wasting his time on s- simple emails that you can Google yourself. And that's, I, that's my, my hope for all of us.
Um, Ruben, did you want to comment, please?
Sure. Well, I mean, I'm happy to help you set up a work plan. Um, I do think that some of the, uh, to speak to Mr. Keller's, uh, issues, I, I do think that some of these are, are not going to be quantifiable. Um, but at least we can lay out some of, some of the expectations of the council and, um, where you want it to go. So, um, I'm happy to work with, uh, a, a, a few members of the council. We can't have a quorum working on it. But, um, if you want to have less than a quorum and then bounce things off of me, I'm, I'm happy to assist in that and, and writing something up.
That would be great. And Tiffany, um, and I just wanted to add to, uh, what Bernard said about the city administrator biweekly report. It would be awesome night. It would be nice to have included in their head, department head, what's going on? Because we, we don't really ever hear what's going on with streets, water, sewer, um, electric or the fire department. So, uh, so it would, it would be nice to hear from those, something about what's going on in those departments as well. Because I, I kind of feel like, uh, if you're an, you're an employee working for, uh, a boss, then you kind of give your boss an update on what's, what you're, what's going on, what projects you're working on, what things are happening. And I, and I don't think that's a unrealistic expectation that, um, the council banner report of what's going. And I, I don't mind the biweekly. That's fine. And weekly, it seems like it would, it would be twice as much work to try and figure out, you know, to make it, make it look worthy that, oh yeah, I'm getting paid all this money. I, you know, I just, so I, I don't mind, I don't mind it being a biweekly. I, I agree with that. Okay. Bernard?
Yeah. If I could just ask the, the city attorney, so is it a pro, is it, is it problematic if we just have the city administrator say, hey, Mr. Bennett, uh, we'd like you to go back to your office, you know, next week or in the next two weeks. You, you try to summarize what you heard and see what you can make quantifiable and what's maybe qualitative. And then bring that back as a work plan. Maybe you look at it just as a third party. But is that, is that also an option on how to put something together? Does it have to be you?
No, that, that is an option. I mean, I, I, I think at this point, we're just having a discussion and all options are on the table. If the council wants that, um, that would be acceptable.
Well, that would be my recommendation, Mayor. Just, he, he's heard us. He can, he can watch the tape if he wants to go through each person's comments. And then try to create a, uh, a, a set of objectives that he's understanding from the council. Then we can look that over and, you know, and tighten it up, uh, in different places that make it clearer and more objective. So we have something, you know, as, uh, as a, uh, you know, a standalone document that will, uh, uh, give clarity on to whether our expectations are being met or not.
You want to respond?
But I mean, I, I, I like that as well. Uh, and I just want to comment that I, I, I in agreement, I think biweekly is fine. And, but I would like to see by department, I think our, the way it's structured right now around the goals, sometimes it's like there's nothing to work, there's nothing to down that. Uh, but there's, I know, I'm not, I think it would be good for those departments also, um, to share what they're working on as well and be an opportunity to recognize the, their contributions. So I'd like that. Uh, I've commented before and I, I think there's a difference between public works, um, electric, water, in our office staff. Uh, I, I think that it's very different when you have to mobilize and go out with all your tools and get into a trench. Uh, it makes a lot of sense for them to work a ten hour day, you know, but it's not the same when you're working in an office environment. And that's feedback we've gotten from people in the community. I know in one of the emails we got, we, you know, nobody's ever complained about the fact that we're not here on Fridays, but they don't, I don't know if they're coming, coming to you to complain. Uh, they've talked to us, uh, and we hear about it. Um, I know that there have been times when I wanted to call city hall, but I didn't because no one's here, you know? And then, uh, so just because the phone doesn't ring or does, someone doesn't come in, doesn't mean that there isn't a, a need. So I'm also in agreement with that. I, I'd like to see office staff here five days a week.
Mayor?
Yes.
One last thing. Yeah. To that point, uh, having the update include departments, uh, their work accomplishments, I think again, would very much serve the purpose of this report. And, you know, just as an example, um, I was, uh, working on a forestry project this weekend and I drove by, uh, city hall and I noticed it looks like the roof had been power washed or like all those little, you know, little clumps of, uh, moss or whatever. It was, it looked spotless up there. I'm guessing public works did that. Somebody hired, went out and cleaned off the roof of city hall. That's a great example of like, you know, staff are doing maintenance on a public facility, which keeps it in good order and, and keeps us operating efficiently, you know? Uh, so there's probably stories like that all, all, every week that, that, uh, department heads could tell. And then we get visibility. We can share those with the member of the community. And like I said, that improves trust. It improves, uh, understanding of all the amazing things this city's doing. And I just, you know, want to put in my two cents there. Thank you.
Gordon?
I want to address an email I got sent out a while ago, uh, talking about uh, city staff morale. And I just want to point out that while I recognize that there has been some issues in council with, with silly questions, um, and, and maybe some things that wasted time, I want to point out that it's also management's, uh, responsibility to, to help promote morale and keep morale up. Um, that's, that's what what management, that's, and that's one of the, one of the key roles because high morale means high productivity, means happy workers. We want, we want our city staff to be happy. We, they work hard and, and we all recognize that. Um, but that, that does fall in the job description.
So we have a work plan on a motion on the floor with a second. I'm really, I think at the very least, we should come up with a work plan for the audits, at the very least. And then maybe do what, uh, council member Seeger was proposing, let Jordan go back and summarize and bring it back to us what he thinks we said. Um, but I think the audits we need to stand really firm on.
So you, you're talking two different work orders?
No, that's not, so we said, uh, so we have a motion on the floor for a work plan.
Work plan, I mean, two different work plans. I'm sorry.
No, I don't think that's what, um, Bernard proposed. He prom, proposed that city administrator go back and summarize and come back to us with what he understood, right?
Okay.
That's correct. All in one document.
All in one document.
Yes, ma'am.
And he would bring that back to us.
Sorry, that didn't sound like that. It sounded like you wanted specifically one for the audit and one for the rest of the issues.
Did you have any questions or anything?
Nope. No.
Nope. Just my actions moving forward. Sounds like draft two work plans, one specifically about my performance, one specifically about the audits. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what I, that's why I was.
See, I don't think we're asking him to draft his own work plan. Well.
Uh, that's what I thought.
I thought it did that. That's, in fact, we got that he would, he would, that.
That's what I heard. Yeah.
That's what I was proposing. Yes, ma'am. That's.
The motion I made was that we, we, we make a work, you know, uh, make a work plan so that we provide one voice of exactly what our, what we want from our city administrator. Uh, but with second, and the idea was that the discussion, we would all share feedback. And then he could take that feedback, digest it. And I like the suggestion that Bernard had of let the city administrator write the performance plan or the work plan, bring it back to us to review. And then we can clarify if there's things that we're missing on there that we want to have added, as opposed to paying our city administrator or the, uh, city attorney to do this.
Ruben, can I ask you a question? Is it normal that someone make their own work plan?
Um, I've seen it. Um, I've seen it go many different ways. I, yeah, it's, it's nothing that concerns me too much and um, I'm happy to, uh, Jordan, I'm happy to review it. Um, I took some pretty careful notes here tonight. And so, um, yeah, I, I think that's fine. I think that's a, a good way to go. I, uh, it will likely be helpful in that I think that if Jordan prepares it, then he's gonna, he's gonna be on the same page as us.
Yes. And that's ultimately the goal is that we're all on the same page and hopefully it removes all the friction or wondering why Brenda says this or Pete says this and that we're all on the same page and the communication is good, you know? So. Yes.
So may I ask the motion for this, since there wasn't a motion, right?
There, there was a motion.
Uh, it, so Councilmember Happy makes, or makes a motion to make a work claim and then through it, seconded, right? And is there anything else I should add?
And I think, were we gonna, you wanna redo yours or?
I said there should be an amendment to the administration defining the process.
Yes, yes. Can you amend your?
Yeah, yeah. So we can define the process. Uh, so, uh, motion is to, uh, uh, create a work plan for the city administrator that includes all of the input from all seven counselors providing clear feedback on expectations.
Well, having him put it together, discussing with the attorney.
So he'll summarize, he's gonna put together a work plan and then he's gonna review this with our city attorney and then bring him back to council to review and approve.
And I, and I will.
Does that sound right, Ruben?
Hang on, I have to unmute. Yeah, um, that, that sounds fine. Yeah.
All right. Do you need to second the amended one or?
Do I need to use a name?
Yeah, we're gonna go towards both of them. So going for the amended motion of having city administrator and city attorney bring it, get a work plan together and bring it back to council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host. All right. House is unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, council.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I have reservations on how we got to this point. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up or if I should do it during my comments.
We already, yeah, cause we're in action. So.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, moving on.
Thank you, council. I'm gonna sign off if that's okay.
Thank you, Ruben. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see everyone.
Yes. All right. Next one is adopt ordinance four six seven to amend Article three of the C B C.
All right. In twenty twenty-two, the city of Cascade Locks partnered with consultants from the University of Oregon's Institute for Policy and Research Engagement to develop a strategic plan. The twenty twenty-three strategic plan outlines five key categories for action. Downtown revitalization, code improvements, affordable housing, communication enhancement, public service. Many of these goals focus on enhancing the visual and functional aspects of downtown, streamlining city processes to be business, be more business friendly and updating the development code to reflect current community priorities. In twenty twenty-four, the city received a technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to support implementation of short-term strategic plan goals. Specifically, the grant funded the development of a downtown plan in revision to the Cascade Locks Development Code to promote a more business-friendly environment. The city again contracted with I P R E to lead the effort. The downtown revitalization plan is completed in February twenty twenty-five. Major goals of the downtown revitalization plan were, one, assessment and recommendations, evaluate existing assets in various development and private, and provide actionable recommendations, including design code amendments, expanding public parking, recreational trail connections, signage improvements and funding strategies for key projects. Two, code normalization, draft updated language for the Cascade Lock Community Development Code to simplify and improve processes for developers, businesses, residents and staff. Three, community engagement, ensure open, transparent planning processes with meaningful public involvement. I P R E staff, city staff and downtown revitalization project steering committee collaborated to draft proposed amendments to Article three, land use districts of the development code. These amendments primarily focus on the following zones, eight dash six point seven zero downtown zone, simplified purpose statement, updated permitted and conditional uses, addition of mobile food units and childcare centers as permitted uses, addition of cottage clusters as conditional. Clarified dimensional standards, building height and parking requirements, new design standards to promote a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented corridor that preserves views, reflects regional architecture and supports a pleasant sixth street scale. Eight dash six point seven two, commercial zone, addition of mobile food units and childcare centers as permitted uses. Replacement of design standards with those purposes with those proposed for the downtown zone. Eight dash six point seven six, commercialized glass residential zone, addition of childcare centers as permitted uses, replacement of design standards with those proposed for the downtown zone. Eight dash six point four, light industrial zone, addition of mobile food units as permitted uses. Eight dash six point nine two, public zone, addition of mobile food units as permitted uses. Public hearings and revisions. The Cascade Locks Planning Commission held a public hearing on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five and unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendments to city council. City council held a public hearing on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five and left the public comment period open until July seventh, twenty twenty-five. A first reading of the ordinance occurred on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five during discussion at the first reading of the ordinance, council recommended set the changes. The tax review or the updated ordinance four six seven in chapter eight of the city charter. A copy of the updated ordinance was provided to council and posted City Hall seven days prior to this meeting, satisfying the requirement to read the ordinance in title only in mentioning the substantial changes unless a council member objects. Does any council member object to reading the title, the ordinance by title only? Okay, I will now read by title only and list the substantial changes. Ordinance number four, six, seven, ordinance amending the Community Development Code, Article three, land use districts. Subtan- substantial changes from the first reading are moving downtown zone from residential designation to commercial designation, page four. Moving cottage clusters from permitted use to conditional use in the downtown zone, page nineteen. Changing one parking spot for one thousand gross square feet to one thousand per total floor area, square feet, page twenty-one. Clarification of design standard applicability to existing structures, page twenty-one, and eight, and thirty-three. Council's options are to adopt ordinance four six seven, amend ordinance four six seven, and bring, bring back another reading, not adopt ordinance four six seven.
Well, just so we can have discussion, I make the motion to adopt ordinance four six seven.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Tiffany, so, uh, when you say change one parking spot per net square, okay.
I think I had it backwards in my.
I, 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 yeah, yeah, okay.
I caught that as I was prepping.
Is it okay? Okay. So those were the changes. Um, just, uh, one thing, in the future, when I, when I'm asking, when it's being asked for a red line, usually you do a red line from what the last document we discussed to the changes that are made in the current document. Not, the, the red line that you sent was from all the way from the beginning of the process. So it wasn't, it wasn't easy to see what the changes that were made from our last discussion at the end of this, um, end of, uh, September. So that was, that, that, that's, I don't know. That's my expectation of what a red letter, letter.
And it, uh, may have been some confusion on, on if you're wanting a red line from the original
Yeah, yeah.
versus just that one.
Yeah, because when I was trying to compare, I'm like, wait a minute, cottage, cottage clusters is kind of the wrong place.
I think there was miscommunication on that. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, uh, just, yeah, to clarify, that, that's what my expectation of a red line is, is when we make changes from, uh, the last document that we look at to the current.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was it. All right, Bernard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just, Mr. Bennett, if you could, or maybe your, we have a planner on, online with us tonight?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. Uh, can you just refresh me? What, what's, what exactly are we doing with regards to moving downtown zone from residential to commercial designation? I don't recall the nature of that.
So that was the very beginning of the, um, document where it puts each district in zoning, zoning districts, residential, commercial and industrial. Downtown was listed as residential, um, and this council wanted it moved to commercial. No one quite knew the history of it, but if, uh, we're all recalling correctly, um, it was listed in residential possibly to meet, um, um, housing stock needs for the city. So the downtown.
Okay, you know, okay, now I do remember this. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Net, okay. That, thank you. That's exactly what I needed. I appreciate that. Yep, okay.
Is that it?
Yep. Is it for me? Yes, ma'am.
Did you have anything, or Mary?
I have not. Um, but I think we can clarify one, uh, most of them, but a couple. On, um, and forgive me, this was very difficult to read. But on most of these, you say the building shall, no building shall exceed a height of thirty-five feet. And I'm on page twenty-eighth of thirty-four.
Of which did I do that? Of the red line?
Of the, no, the red line you never follow.
Okay, all right.
But on the red line, um, that's D, then there's E that says, no, the maximum height and size of minimum setbacks per accessory structure shall comply with the provisions of chapter eight dash six one six four accessory structure. But that is not included in the final. But yet it is in, it's still in the red line. So does that not go in there?
Um, no, it's not in the final, but I, I honestly couldn't answer to why it's not in there.
I mean, is it supposed to be in the final?
I, I'm not sure on that one. I'd have to ask Amanda.
Twenty-eight. It's on page twenty-eight. You've got D, E, and there's no F. If you look at the red line, you have a D, E, N, and F on page thirty.
Why you really do?
And this happens in quite a few of the types of construction business, whatever it is, one of those. And I have them all marked. I have like eight of them.
Did you get a chance to, cause, uh, like Tiffany brought up, um, the, the red line was a previous, previous, previous iteration. Um, did you get a chance? Are you looking at?
I'm looking at the red line that Mr. Bennett gave me, that gave all of council that requested it.
Did you get a chance to cross-reference the most recent, from the, from the most recent meeting and?
No, because I couldn't find it. Sorry. I got, everything is catastrophized in my, uh, of ours, council by.
You have a lot, not eight. Yeah, you do have a lot of documents. So that was paying and hearing it out and I'll bring it.
Page twenty-eight. Excellent. I don't know. It's on commercial zone is what I have it on. It has to do with dimensional requirements, eight there, six, seven, two dot O four O.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll, let me look it up.
Okay, I'll let you look that one up. And then there's another one on the commercial residence zone is the same way. What did you say that one?
Oh, yeah, Pete, okay. So let's go back to the first one. It is still in this last document. Somehow it popped up. It is, there are no maximum coverage requirements. So it is in the last document that we looked at on September twenty-second. And for some reason it did link to this document. Okay.
And it's also on page thirty-two of the document that you put in our packet. It's missing. Actually, excuse me, it's page thirty-three. Sorry.
What's missing?
The same verbiage is missing. The minimum, maximum, the minimum, maximum height
Oh, okay.
is, is missing on every one of them. Um, it's also missing, oh. I missed the other one, missing. It's missing on all of the, um, here it's missing on light industrial zone. Page. Hold on. Page forty. Yeah, forget it. It's, um, page forty, it's missing on heavy industrial zone, page forty-four. Think that's all. It's on the one. Those are the ones that I seen are missing that particular um, quote or whatever sentence.
Do you have all them written down?
I can. I just have them marked with.
Yeah, when you get a chance, can you?
I can write it down. Yeah.
Thank you.
I just didn't have.
It's a lot to follow. I know, I know. Just so we can make sure we.
Yeah.
That are.
And the next question I have after all of those is that no building shall exceed a height of forty-five feet.
What page are you on?
I'm on page thirty-eight. This is the first one that says forty-five feet.
Of the current document?
Of the current document.
Page one again.
Thirty-eight. It said, no building shall exceed a height of forty-five feet. My question is, how can we have people, um, building a height of forty-five feet when we do not have a fire department to cover that? They cannot. If there's a fire on it in that building, we do not have the equipment to protect that building at forty-five feet. Eric?
Oftentimes you can add stipulations or they, they can provide those necessary tools in order to allow that building to be built. It would be some sort of a conditional use.
You're having to feedback.
But that's not any additional use. And I, I did talk to our fire chief today as the mayor was here and he said they do not have any equipment to protect a building that high. It's exactly the same thing with T I B and gorgeous brew. They would have to call in either Hood River or Gresham to come help fight that fire. Because they cannot do it. They do not have the equipment. They do not have a, a truck that goes that high.
Didn't their ladder go to, their ladder go to thirty-six?
Yeah, thirty. Thirty-six, I think it was. So they cannot get on the roof to, um, do any firefighting. So the building is pretty much.
Yeah.
So my question is, why are we going forty-five feet on, on these buildings that are, um, in this one case is, find out which one it is. It is resort, commercial zone.
I would assume for that one, it's to build, um, hotels. Multi-story hotels.
Okay, there's also heavy industrial zone, says height forty-five feet. All we're doing in my mind is creating a problem by saying you can build forty-five feet, but we can't protect you if you're with fire. You're saying that. I just don't think that's the proper way of doing our language thing. Is that all? And there was more forty-five feet, but frankly, I lost track. But I do, do know that. So I'm thinking that we should, um, not do forty-five feet. That's just my opinion. And that's all I have, are those major things. And I will give you a list there, okay, of the, of the things that are attached.
Did you have something to say on?
You know, I was on the planning commission when we allowed the, um, Best Western to come in. And we fought them for windows in the front that look like the Federalist plan that the old houses had, the little hangs in the windows, cause they wanna have the old sliders. So they put the sliders on the back something, um, front side it has to have. That rolls. Um, but you know, considering her thinking, you've got, uh, Thunder Island and you've got gorgeous bear and you've got the Best Western.
Yes, Best Western. That's true.
And we could have said at that time, you need to provide the, uh, fire department some kind of safety equipment to access a fire on your second door. And we did it.
Okay.
Sorry. But you know, uh, whoever, I was not on the planning commission for Thunder Island or gorgeous, but you know, they could have. But you know, they could have said, Eric's right, you could ask whoever's building. They need to provide the city some kind of safety equipment to access. Uh, for safety reasons for their own property. Thank you, bye, thank you. Bernard?
Yeah, I, I, Mayor, if I could just respond to that, look, I support the forty-five foot height limit. Only because I want to see that type of development come to our town and maximize the space. And, and opportunity from all, all the, the downtown zone. And not to mention property tax value. Now, as much as I acknowledge. That uh, we've got buildings in town that are above that, and we don't have a ladder truck, that's what you, you would typically have. What cities do who are in our situation is they ensure the building code for those taller buildings. Has, has extraordinary or, or uniquely robust fire suppression systems inside them. If you can do that, then you can dramatically decrease of a fire which it would actually, you know, get to a point of a ladder truck. I, I would love if um, you know, Amanda was here, but I, I think that's what she would tell us. If uh, she was responding to Councilmember Bump's question, say, why are we allowing forty-five feet, it's like, well. We're trying to encourage development, you want that, you know, higher value property uh, and, and, and developments to take place. Um, and, and to address the fire, you, that's why you require uh, higher suppression, fire suppression. Uh, requirements for these buildings, and that mitigates the risk, it doesn't eliminate it, but you can dramatically mitigate your risk. On these taller buildings, if you have, if you do require those. And I think most developers would not, they wouldn't, they wouldn't bat an eye at that. Most new buildings, that's how they're come with anyway. So um, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to require that, and I would hate for us to limit. The value that we could achieve in our downtown.
Mary Ann?
Then if that's the case, uh, Bernard, then it needs to be in our code. That they would need to have that in their building.
But I don't think that's in this part of the code, Councilmember Bump, I think that's in a different part of the code.
I have no clue, you know, Jordan, sorry, it was the question. Whether the fire suppression should be in this part of the code or another part of the code. So when we have buildings that are that tall that we require them to, but frankly.
I don't, that's not a land use issue, that's a building code, that's a county. I don't recall fire suppression being anywhere in land use in all this process, that, that's a county and state issue. Okay, yeah. I do know, anything over ten thousand square feet requires a fire suppression system.
Okay.
But it was Bernard's suggestion, because you were in the bathroom, that if they have a more robust, they'd be required to have a more robust. About, like, a fire suppression system, since we don't have the equipment to be able to respond to that.
Gotcha, or.
We don't have a ladder truck. Uh, Jordan, you know, so. W- they're a higher risk, I mean, they would want a more robust fires, because they know we don't have a fire, a ladder truck. If they had a, a, you know, a, a, a multi-story fire, they're, they're waiting for a Gresham or a Hood River. So it's only sensible, if you're a developer and a, and a, and an owner of a business, that you would have a. A very impressive fire suppression to avoid the need for a ladder truck to come out and save you.
Okay, on, on page twenty-three. I, I thought we had a discussion under the weather protection, that uh, it was. Only a requirement for commercial buildings to, um, three A under weather protection, that it be. Uh, about only a requirement for a commercial buildings that I can. Does that need to be stated clearly in this function? Because we do have some homes that weren't done.
I don't recall the discussion. Directly, but I think that goes back to the houses currently here are non-conforming. Will fall residential code, not this code.
Okay, okay, because I just don't, I mean, it's always up to interpretation, and I don't have a correct person to have to interpret that. Oh, I have a phone now, but do I have to deal with, so I don't, no.
I, I think the, the result of that conversation was that we could, we could call our businesses or, or something of the like. Um, just because there's so many codes that reference any, and, and she did change some of that, where if there's any updates or exterior updates. Required to um, get up to, up to code. Um, which is reasonable, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna paint a brick base for your building, yes, let's get it up to um. Make everything all matching and, and. Uh, uniformity, um, but buildings implies that you should also be. Adding other protection to residential, and you know, that, that shouldn't be an expectation. Uh, that residential buildings um, provide weather protection for the sidewalks. And so I think that was the conversation that I kind of brought up with their, the change up to businesses or, or something.
I remember the conversation, yes, I thought the conclusion was. That this didn't apply to residential, because they're non-conforming, and maybe I'm wrong, I'd have to go back and read.
I think what I kept saying was, where does it say that? You know, and she said that she would, she would clarify. Um, because it, it doesn't specifically say that, if, if in ten years someone comes through and it says, oh, it says buildings. And there's still resident, residents down there, um. But it lasted twenty years, then, then it's up for the may, um, term of ownership, so I would like to clarify that, like, to be clarified.
Alright, do we want that all clarified before we move?
So, our person here is all what's missing, missing, uh.
So. But we need to resend our motion. Yeah, but, so, um, hold on. Do we need to resend our motion, Jordan, on that, since we had a motion on the floor to. Approved four, six, seven, correct, yeah, so we need to, one, that would be you, so I will resend my motion to make the corrections.
Will you be a, a good red line copy, um, of the, all the F, letter F, missing, missing Fs in. Um, and I'm hopefully Mary Ann will get that last.
Yeah.
The uh, business or commercial on page twenty-three for the weather protection. Is there anything else?
Was there a decision on building height?
Did you find out of the, I guess what requirements are, I mean, I, I. That might only some of the concerns to some of the. Building codes or county, but it would help to understand what those requirements are to those larger structures.
Councilmember Pruitt, so we need to fix the missing Fs.
Yes.
And what was your second thing?
So it was page twenty.
Twenty-three.
Page twenty-three, um, we should note that it's uh, for section three, for uh, the weather protection. It should be noted that it um, is for businesses and not homes.
And so Bernard, I made the motion, you made the second, and.
Did I say you make the second?
Yes.
Do I need to, I guess anybody can make that second, right?
Second, to resend the motion, I, I thought it was the same. I thought it was.
You go ahead.
I don't think there's a second for.
And then also to um, find out the requirements for.
Or, high building.
And then fire, I don't know if that gives you enough information.
And we're good to go?
You guys.
Give you a chance to get caught up, Jordan. Can I get on my notes?
I know, I want to make sure you.
Alright, moving on, action item six C, tourism community committee support, tourism committee support.
Sorry, we got, was that a overall unanimous?
Alright, the current contract between the city and the Friends of the Casco Gox Historic Museum for administrative support to the tourism committee is set to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. City staff proposed three options to the tourism committee at the September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, meaning extend the current contract for one year. As permitted by the existing agreement contingent on mutual consent, issue a new request for proposal for tourism support services. Bring the position in-house as a city staff role. City staff recommended pursuing the, the one-year option. This approach provides continuity during a period of transition, allowing new tourism committee member, committee members. Time to acclimate without the added burden of onboarding new support staff. It also gives city time to conduct a comprehensive review of the committee's structure and long-term direction towards your optimal performance. The committee felt they did not have the information needed to make a discussion and wanted to get council's thought, as thoughts as well. City staff and the current support staff felt this was perfect time to plan a joint work session between tourism committee and city council. Before the October twenty-seventh council meeting at six P M. City and contract staff want to present the committee to the committee and council on the history of the committee, a review of its current structure. Possible paths forward and how it fits in the bigger picture of the city's needs and future. Uh, city council's options are to approve, approve a joint work session, not approve a joint work session. Um, we did put a calendar hold on, a notice out to the tourism committee for six o'clock on the twenty-seventh. Just to give them a heads up as soon as possible.
And you can motion that we approve the joint work session.
There you go, second.
I'll second that.
I haven't got it, sorry, Siger. Alright, any discussion? No discussion?
I just, the only thing I want to know, though, I'm sorry, go ahead, uh, is October twenty-seventh, uh, and this uh, contract expires November thirty, so. We're, our timelines are really pretty short, as far as making decisions on this, I feel like we're gonna have to. Have clear direction after that work session. What's the, so after we got the work session, what happens at that point, or does it go back to tourism, is their next meeting then to approve the extension of the contract? If that's the.
If that's how council wants to approach it, so the, I, the only way I don't see a gap in coverage is if we just do the one-year. Um, but the tourism committee is on the advisory committee, council can do what council wants, they can take their input. Or they can just move forward without getting tourism's input, it's completely up to council.
My feeling on this, we got enough stuff to work, we're working on, I feel like it's. I feel like, uh, as we were talking earlier about priorities, I, I, I think that this is something where we can, uh, I'm sure there's a whole lot we can really do at this point. Um, I think uh, my preference would be that we extend the contract a year as we staff recommended. And uh, and then kick this back to the committee to say you've got twelve months to discuss this internally, make a better recommendation.
Mary Ann?
I'm recommending that uh, we send it back to um, tourism to do an RFP, or they decide what to do in the RFP. It has been a fact, and if you notice tourism, they have four people on there that know what to do. And I think it would be beneficial if they had an RFP with somebody that also knew what to do. I, I'm sorry that Janice, it, it hasn't worked for three years. And the museum and tourism needs to be separated, it, it, it doesn't coexist. I'm sorry, an RFP needs to be done, and I think tourism has the ability to do that RFP. They've done it before, they can do it again.
Courtney?
I, I would like to point out that tourism committee wouldn't recommend this unless they didn't, un- unless they. You know, they recommend this because they see an issue um, that they want addressed. It, it's not, it's not just willy-nilly, there, there's something that they want to address, and, and I would. As, as a committee, I would take their recommendation to um. For them to be able to look at it, I like what Mary Ann said, let, let them build an RFP and, and raise a look at it. And as you said, we are a little overburdened with other things going on, I think that sounds like a really good uh, compromise.
And may I add, um, tourism, the tourism committee is not asking for a joint work session. They're asking for us to decide. On the three options, and, you know, I don't think we should extend the contract. I think tourism should decide on the RFP and how they want to proceed, is their committee. Yes, and then they'll bring it back to us on how they want to proceed.
Uh, Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor, so, I guess I, I was with uh, Councilmember Kyleman until maybe I wasn't, but. So, my proposal was to uh. Direct tourism to con, to extend it for a year. But I thought Councilor Kyle was gonna, but they want to meet with us, and I, I think we should meet with them, I, I. Uh, at the end of the day, the tourism committee works for the city council. And it sounds like they're, they're, they're struggling with the, with the little, for a little direction, and they want to have a conversation. That was my take, and that's where I think maybe I'm uh, misunderstanding what Councilmember Bump was saying. Let me ask the city administrator, is it your understanding that, that tourism wants to meet with us to help them? Uh, you know, uh, map out a plan forward, it was what your understanding, that was my understanding.
They did not specifically say meet, hold a joint work session. They wanted council's input on to work together to move forward. Um, our council procedures, your council procedures does mention a. Joint meeting once a year, both with tourism and the planning commission, which had not happened in years. Then twenty-three maybe, it's been at least, it's been more than a year.
Alright, well, that's enough for me to, 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 to convince me that we should do this meeting. And have a more strategic conversation, I feel like if we want to simplify their life. Again, I'm supportive of Councilmember uh, Happy, let's just direct them to extend the contract one year. We have this meeting, we, we kick around some strategy, and then they have a year to either. Uh, decide to go out for RFP, or, or continue on the path they are now. So, and to be clear, when I say plates are full, it's the city administrator's plates full, not our plate, our plate is not that full. We, we seem fully capac, have capacity to take on the issues that require the business, the city. But also these recurring meetings that it's clear we've been neglecting, we have not been doing these tourism committees. And I don't even think, planning, and I would like to remedy that, I want us to start meeting with our, our. Our special committees on a recurring basis, so we have a better relationship, and, and there, and there's clear guidance, so that, that's my two cents, thank you.
Jordan? I want to note that three of the committee members, September twenty-ninth was their first meeting on the committee. And they have not had a meeting since June because they could not get it formed. That's why there's such a delay in this. Courtney?
Process a little more.
Okay, Stephanie?
I, okay, I think we should issue, because it was the previous. Uh, it was the previous tourism's recommendation that we go out for an RFP. Uh, and I don't think that that has changed, but I, but I think we should still be able to have a work session. But we should give them direct, the, the direction to go for the R, RFP.
So, give them direction to go for the RFP and have the work session as well?
Session.
You ready now, Courtney?
What's, what's the RFP process, like, what, what's the foreseeable timeline, guess to mention on that?
Um, gosh. We would look at probably out to the. Public, what's today, thirteenth, they're meeting joint work session on the twenty-seventh. I mean, we're looking at after Thanksgiving before this meeting.
I'm not asking about a joint work session, I'm just asking about the RFP process. Just the RFP process.
Uh, put it out for four weeks probably, give people enough time, and then.
When you say put it out, what, what you made by us, alright?
Publicize it.
Tomorrow.
Like, sorry, what do?
Whenever we do it.
When it, when it's out for, for public consumption for them to respond, give them four weeks. We're probably looking at, at this point, they're meeting on the twentieth, we're probably looking at.
We're probably looking at, at this point, they're meeting on the twentieth. We're probably looking at. Best case scenario, everything runs smoothly beginning of. October, not October, November, before this thing goes out. I mean.
When you say this thing goes out, what do you mean by that?
The R F P.
Before, so, so you're saying we'll take two weeks before we even publish it?
Well, they have to draw it up.
Draw it up, yeah. Okay.
Hold on. Where are you done?
Well, I I I I feel like there was a bit of a dialogue. It was it was helpful, um, since I'm still learning the whole process of all of this. Right, I I am starting to get the whole input, um. So, so you're saying that it'll be two weeks before we we get the R F P put out?
Probably longer than that. If if the tourism committee meets, they're sent to meet on the twentieth. They do a draft. Council still needs to approve the R F P. Soon as that would happen would be the twenty seventh. So it would probably go out the tw- twenty ninth, somewhere in there, assuming council approves it. So best case scenario, this thing goes out at the very end of October. And then we're looking at four weeks to give people enough time to process it, ask questions, what bid together. Um. Depending on how council wants to go, tourism would approve it, and then it would go to council. So we're looking at first part of December. For council to, for the tourism to review it. Council typically doesn't meet around Christmas, so we're looking at January before council even gets eyes. On the bids to select them. I mean, that's just rough calendar in my head. Okay, Tiffany, can I get you?
Um, but this is not tourist season, so it it's okay if we have like a lull, I feel. And I feel like it's worst case scenario we're getting, so I, I mean, I'm, I don't.
I, you know, I hear what you're saying. I, you know, the the it's. Possibly worst case scenario. I I just think that it's unrealistic. I think that don't to you to where city administrator Ben has said was that we will have a lapse. You know, if we, yeah, don't renew the contract. And I think that that's, that is realistic. I think even if things go perfectly, I I hear what you're saying, you know, it's the slow season. However, you know, marketing or our city, uh, it, you don't market, uh. During the busy time. You have to market all the time. Um, but really, it's, uh, you gotta market in the slow time so that you get the business one in during the busy time. Uh, I think there's a lot they do during the off-season that helps set things up for the summer. So I I I feel like we need to be doing this. Not a month before the contract's due to expire, but. We should be starting this process now for next year. Uh, so that's why I'm advocating for renewing the contract, but then putting it up for R F P.
Okay, good. Bernard?
Thank you, mayor. So, yeah, I I I concur with what Councilmember Happy just said there. Again, well, two things. One, I don't think it's reasonable to ask the tourism committee. To be the keepers of the R F P process. They should examine the 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 submissions. But the building of the R F P, the advertising, that goes back on the city administrator's desk. Now, again, his desk is very full, and that's more reason in my mind on why we shouldn't. Do a, an R F P at this time. Let's do a renewal so he doesn't have to put one additional thing on his on his to-do list. I guess a a compromise would be we extend it for six months. And that gives, uh, again, that ensures there's no lapse, but then that gives us a six-month, uh, you know, runway. To prepare for a, uh, a a new, uh, provider of these services, uh, in that timeframe. So we're we're very Johnny on the spot. We can lean forward and we can have a a clean trans- uh, transition. Um, uh, assuming that's what the council wants to do.
Courtney.
Um. Well, I mean, that that puts us in in March, um, which gives about three months for the next person to. Step into that spot and 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 take over, and I think that sounds very reasonable.
Mary Ann.
I don't know. You don't need, you don't need to say anything?
Okay.
Tiffany. Yeah, and I was, I was just gonna suggest three months, but I.
I was gonna do three months, you know, I thought.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest three months, and I I don't know how complicated the R F P is gonna be because we just did it not too long ago. So it's, I mean, it should be pretty much like there. Um, and invoke and. Not need a lot of tweaking to it, so.
The, sorry, excuse me, America, the the tweaking would be what work either the tourism committee or council wants this staff to do. Do they want it to truly just be administrative staff that does minute-taking and prepping agendas, or they want them to do? Assisting with the marketing side of the, the tourism side? What do you want out of this? R F P, out of this person?
Only question I have is just, uh, in the staff report, it says that. City staff proposed three options to the tourism committee for September twenty ninth, twenty five, meaning option one is extend the current contract for one year. In parentheses, as as permitted by the existing agreement contingent on mutual consent. Does the existing agreements? Say that it has to be a twelve-month extension, or does it specify?
It does say one year, but I I would assume they'd be open to some.
So, at at least.
But again, the museum, the feedback I have gotten is they're open to it. They feel that the structure is not sustainable. And are requesting the tourism committee to do, bring in a consultant to help better plan its feature. What ha- I mean, what is the tourism of Cascade Locks look like in the future?
Well, based on what I I I think that, you know, recommending a six-month extension and then saying, let's do this work session and give them some clarity around. Uh, direction, I think would make a lot of sense. Then we can decide whether or not we want to put this out for R F P or, and what goes into that R F P.
Courtney, did you have anything to add?
I was curious on, I mean, I know. Uh, you brought up. That. That the time to plan the busy season is in a slow season, but I'm curious on on what. What would be? If if there was a lapse in in coverage, so to speak, what? What would fall through? What wouldn't be accomplished that would be getting accomplished with somebody on staff?
Um. Mainly just the administrative process of approving ads going out. Um, the. Bulk of it starts in the spring or the summer season, so.
Mary Ann, Heather.
I did, I I remember what I was gonna say, yeah. Someone had to say that. Um. The tourism staff knows. Where they want to advertise and how they want to advertise it. Um, if it just takes, um. The administration to approve that, they could do that with that three-month or six-month. Um, extension. I mean, they can do that. And so I don't see a problem. I don't see that they're gonna have a problem. Delaying anything if they, if we extend it three or six months.
So what I'm hearing is that we're going to approve the joint work session and. Extend the contract for six months if both the other side agrees, right?
If the museum agrees, yes.
That's it. Go ahead.
I mean. Does, does the museum have a time limit to respond to that by, or will we hear it by next council meeting? Or are they gonna wait till January? I mean, I I didn't mean to imply that they would.
That's all of you.
They extend the person's contract by a year already?
I have no idea.
Okay.
So the vendors that we use for printing brochures and rack cars and all those things that they, you know, promotional materials. Uh, like all the vendors that they work with, who is paying those invoices?
City.
Uh, getting the, you know, what's that? The city gets them?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, the city gets them. So the the committee approves them. The support staff, um. Processed the paperwork, goes to the finance department. If it doesn't reach any need of approval from the council, we, staff approves it.
Okay, but sorry, so just clarification here. So you said that the. The committee is processing the?
No, no, the support staff.
The support staff?
Yes.
And where, who's the support staff work with? The museum, right?
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, if we don't have someone processing all of those invoices, they never make it till they can't give a review, and they don't make it to the city, they're not getting paid. I've heard that some of our vendors aren't getting paid because they haven't had a quorum and they can't review and submit it to the city. Is that a factual statement?
Uh, I have approved some even without their, just because they need to get paid. Yeah, I know, off the top of my head, but yes, they're not having a quorum has been an issue.
And I think that I. Make, not having, uh, you know. This administrative support for the committee would only exacerbate that issue and make it worse.
Yes, the city staff would have to fill the gap to make sure things keep moving forward.
Thanks.
Courtney, that kind of sounds like to me that the, um, administrative side of things has already had, has things in a bundle. And and now that they have a quorum, they can push that through. So that that paperwork's already done. It doesn't need to get done. It just.
Oh, it's always coming in, though. They're always getting mails and they're processing and and then filtering the the spam, just like we do with our own bills. And then the bills that need to get paid, and then they get the committee to review, and then they go to the city staff to to get paid.
Tiffany, and then we're gonna move on, because we're, okay.
Extended six months and have the workshop, but also I wonder if we should also continue with the R F P process to get that started. Uh, I've been saying you should do all three at once and not just wait. Um, I would like to add that to the motion. So, so should I add that to the motion?
Yeah, just clarify your motion, so.
So she's got, I am, uh, adding to my motion to approve the joint work session. Uh, extend the current contract. I guess six months. And do an R F P. At this, all at the same time.
Clarification, are you wanting the tourism committee to put together the R F P for council's approval?
Yes, because they would know best what we need.
Okay.
I thought we were gonna, I thought that was part of the joint work session. I thought we were gonna try to clarify that, and then that way we can provide input to the R F P.
I would. Where they discuss, because they know what they want for an R F P and then present it to us at the work session. Yeah.
Thank you, I didn't mean to confuse this.
No, because I just would like to, I don't, I might have to. Lolly them all back.
So we got a motion on the floor to approve the joint work session for October twenty seventh at six P M with tourism and council. To extend the contract for six months. And also for tourism to do the R F P, get it ready, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I can do. And then you second that? All right. He, he happy seconded. All right, all in favor of that, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, it counts you down, a slight donates. All right, moving on. Approved recruitment of utilities director.
All right, the approved twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Cascade Loan, Cascade Locks Budget Resolution one five two zero. Includes funding for a new utilities director position effective January first, twenty twenty-six. Staff requesting council approval to begin the recruitment process. The job description and recruitment brochure are attached to review. The position will oversee both the public works and electric departments with direct supervision of public works and working foreman, uh, public work supervisor and working foreman. In direct supervision of the journey alignment on operations specialists in the electric department. The position is budgeted ninety-five thousand dollars annually plus benefits. McCord Creek Powerline Relocation Project update. Councils express concern regarding cost overruns of, overruns of the McCord Creek Powerline Relocation Project. Detailed breakdown of expenses by fiscal year, category and phase is attached. The original project was expected to be roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. Council approved the loan from the Oregon Transportation Infrastructure Bank for one million, uh, billion dollars to allow for contingencies. The bid received by the city came in at one point one million or more. Cost savings during the construction moved the final cost to one million. Ten thousand. The total cost included engineering for the original project came in at one thousand ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-three cents.
Three one billion.
What did I say?
One thou- one thou-
Oh, one, yeah, one million, yeah, ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-three cents. A difference of ninety-four thousand. Thirty-five dollars over budget, three hundred and fifty dollars over budget. Uh, again, uh, just a quick breakdown, original estimate nine hundred thousand, loan approved one million, initial bid one point one million, final construction. Uh. One million, ten thousand, just a hair under. Total costs including engineering, one million, ninety-four thousand. Over budget overrun ninety-four, two fifty. The unexpected process of removing a vault and rerouting a second time costs an extra hundred and nine thousand in construction and just under seven thousand in engineering. Putting the total cost for the project at one million, two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents. The state of Oregon has provided one million dollars to repay the loan. ODOT has acknowledged partial responsibility for the second relocation and committed sixty thousand dollars towards the initial. Of the additional cost. A third-party engineer is currently reviewing the documentation to help determine the responsibility for the remaining ninety-four thousand, thirty-four dollars. In the worst-case scenario, the city may need to absorb this remaining cost. This would result in the electric department incurring a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-three cents in unrecoverable expenses over three fiscal years. The electric department fiscal overview, due to the delayed reimbursement from the E D A Electrical System Upgrade Project. The electric department currently shows a net deficit of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty. For twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, the reimbursement. Reimbursable amount is four hundred and seventy thousand, which. Once received, will result in a net positive of approximately three hundred and eighty-two thousand. Please note, these are rough estimates, as audits are not complete. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, staff delays have, uh, staffing delays have resulted in a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings on salaries and purse contributions. As full staffing is not expected until early November twenty twenty-five. Um, conclusion, electric department's financial history and current year savings position is to. Position it to absorb the remaining cost of the McCord Creek Project. Staff respectfully request council approval to proceed with recruitment for the utilities director position.
I move to approve recruitment for the utilities director position.
Second.
I'll second that. All right, any discussion?
Just clarification, really quick, uh, on the. Uh, I think it was just a misstatement, but I just want to make sure that we're reading the. It says, uh, third-party engineer is currently reviewing documentation to help determine the responsibility for the remaining, you said ninety-four thousand and thirty-four dollars. And here it's forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, forty-nine, sorry, yeah, I.
There was a lot of ninety fours.
Yeah.
And the over budget was ninety-four thousand, so it's one I clarified, uh, what I thought you meant.
Yeah.
Okay, Courtney.
Are we, are we sticking strictly to the utility director? Can I ask a question about the the math in here?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I'm curious, I see the revised total prod- total project cost, uh, at one change two ten. Um, so in in my head, just trying to do some simple math, I get, uh, two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars over budget. The next paragraph, uh, says that. They're gonna commit sixty thousand. Um. And, okay, so. Hmm, where where is this hundred and nine thousand, thirty-four dollar additional cost? In in the previous breakdowns? Nope. Well, like, because you've, uh, you've got a breakdown just at the top of the page. And then you've got a breakdown, construction engineering additional cost being a hundred and fifteen thousand, but then you say that there's a hundred and nine thousand, thirty-four dollars that that need to be made up. Right, ODOT has acknowledged partial responsibility for the second relocation, but it's sixty thousand. Third-party engineers currently reviewing documentation to help determine responsibility for the remaining forty-nine thousand. So that comes out to a hundred and nine thousand, thirty-four. Where? Where did that number come from, a hundred and nine thousand, thirty-four, other than me just adding a, that paragraph?
That's the total construction cost.
For this, yeah, yeah.
But that includes engineering.
Okay, and so, okay, so, yes, so then looking at the next one, worst-case scenario. Um, where does, where does that additional forty-one thousand come in? Where, because it says electric department incurring a hundred and fifty thousand in unrecoverable expenses.
I have the answer if you don't. Interest.
That was my assumption, I just want to assume, um. And then the staffing delay is resulting in a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in savings. Um, we said that you're not going to be fully staffed, expecting to be fully staffed until early November, so is that a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars just covered whatever the fiscal January through October? Or is that a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for a fiscal year?
June, that's, that's, that is July one through end of October.
July one, okay.
Yeah.
So that doesn't include them, just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and that, we're probably not looking at fully staffed till January, so.
But that was, that was the agreement with budget.
Yeah, yeah.
That it wouldn't happen until.
Okay, so, Bernard? Okay, so, Bernard, uh, where you down?
Yes, thank you.
Bernard.
Okay, thank you, mayor. So, look. As I look at this, to me, it's two different issues. One, it is the, the new numbers that have emerged. On the bridge relocation project. And frankly, when it sounds like a, a continuing negotiation, what our final obligation's gonna be, we don't know that. Because there's an engineer trying to do a determination on where the liability or, or, you know, where the responsibility lies. On that last, was it like sixty thousand dollars? Uh, do you, so my first question is, do you have a, do we know when, when he, those findings will become available, Mr. Bennett?
No, I have not heard back yet.
Okay, so, all right, uh. So, we, we don't know what our responsibility is until that work is done, um. Having said that. Am I concerned that City Light can meet those obligations, whether it includes the sixty thousand or does not? No, I'm not. I, 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 uh, feel, uh, very confident that they can, uh, uh, address those issues. Uh, in this fiscal year as, as, you know, the findings emerge. So, so then the question is back to this utility service director. Can you refresh me, I should have asked this, um, what, what is City Light's obligation? Uh, for that position, you said it's, what is it, ninety five to one oh seven? Wha- what percentage do they are responsible for? Uh, in the breakdown of the salary between water, sewer and electric? Do you know that by chance?
I'd say fifty percent, but I feel like that was changed just a hair.
Yeah, I thought it was too.
Yeah, I, I could go grab the, the budget look, but I wanna say it's at, at or near fifty percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, for the, because this, 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 this is budgeted for six months. We're talking their, City Light's requirement is roughly, you know, twenty five thousand, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, to get us through this fiscal year. So, um, I see, I, I have no concern with both meeting our obligations for the bridge project. As well as this twenty five, thirty thousand dollars for the utility services, uh, project. Um, and, you know, I, I saw the latest finance report from the, uh, the finance director. And it looks like revenues are, that, we don't, that, that, we don't see any, any aberrations in that, uh, from the electric utility. As we, we, we march on this year. So I'm not concerned and I, I hope council will support, uh, the hiring of this position. So again, lots on the city administrator's plate. We are a busy city, we have lots of business to attend to. This is gonna help us on all fronts. To push things forward that we're trying to get done and have our city administrator be more effective.
Thank you, Tiffany. Okay, um, so I asked you this question when I had my meeting with you, but how much, so, will hiring this person lighten your load, your workload? And I think you, you told me twenty five percent.
Yeah, roughly, yeah. I mean, and it's not just what's lightens my load, it's what I'm not able to get to with those departments. There's so much more that should be happening with them, but just I don't have the bandwidth to do. Short, medium, long term planning, um. Deferred maintenance programs, I mean, there's just, the, it will load, leave my plate, it will leave Sheldon's plate, Derek's plate. Plus the things that are being missed, I mean, it's on all three sides.
And then, um, during the budget process, I asked each of the department heads, you know, if they were on board with this. Sheldon was still kind of sitting on the fence and Derek was an absolute no go. Uh, well, or maybe leaning more toward, I can't, I can't remember, it was a while ago. So are they anymore on board with this?
Um, somewhat, yes, I think Sheldon is, Derek's probably still hesitant.
Okay. Um. To me, I don't understand how this is a full-time job. I just, I can't, I cannot picture in my head how this. Is a full-time job. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I can't even fix, I mean. There's gonna be forty hours of work each week to deal with the two departments, getting them to do their work. And long range bowling and short range bowling.
Yes. Just including facility management, include this building. Yes, easily forty hours.
And then, uh, just a couple more things, uh, do. We, are there other towns of our size comparable that have this position?
A public works director, yes.
If, I'd be interested to, um, to read about them, if you could give that information to me. Um, and then also here, are, uh, you say ninety five thousand, but you haven't advertised it a hundred and seven. I always squeamish when we have so much more over than what we want.
Well, that, that's the full pay range, so they know what, kind of what their pop in is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we make us later on our starting salary.
Because we've done others in the past and we've automatically gone to that high end, starting off, starting off, so I, I'm just. Concerned with the hundreds of seventy.
I have a couple of questions. You guys keep saying we, the bottom ends ninety five thousand, my document shows seven, seven thousand.
Okay.
And then I just had a question on the loan, which. Probably has nothing to do with this. So our first loan payment on that was due on September first. The fifty five thousand dollars. I'm assuming we didn't make it because we're knowing the million dollars.
For, we have not made it. I've been in contact with OTIV, uh, their finance person. We're waiting for that million dollars to show up. We're gonna pay the principal and whatever interest is owed all at once.
Okay.
And we're done.
And they're not gonna charge us a late fee or any of that, like their contract says, okay.
We, I, I shouldn't. I've been in contact with them, they know what's going on.
I know, I was reading their contract, it's pretty clear, but I just wanted to make sure.
But interest is still continuing to accrue until we get that check?
I believe so, yes.
And we make a payment, it's, uh, interest is gonna stop and then just, I, a million dollar note, that's a lot, uh, every single day is a.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, any idea what the timeline looks like?
We're supposed to get the check this week. That, again, that's what I got, so.
When you get that, we can just.
Yeah.
Counsel.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to say, I wanted to.
So I got a motion on the floor to approve recruitment of the utilities director. And a second, and we're just.
I've got one more, I'm sorry. Somebody, anybody, help me remember the discussion we had about the utilities director. Cause the last thing that I remember talking about was finding, um, someone to man the electrical. First, and then look into finding utilities director. What, does anybody else remember the rest of that conversation?
First, come in, we're gonna hire the utilities director.
And then the last conversation we had about the working format was that we all had questions about the applicant and then have we, did we get an update on that?
We do have an executive session.
That's, that's about, yes.
Yeah.
And so we're gonna make a decision about this before we even get a chance to look at that?
That's what we have on the floor.
To, I, to be clear, what we're voting on is to recruit, not hire.
Yeah, you can't hire a town, you have to come back to council.
We're just, we're just voting on, let's just get the ad out.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, Bernard, you got something real quick?
Yes, real quick, so just as another example of, you know, what's, how are we gonna keep this guy busy or gal busy? You know, I learned on one of my check reviews that we had done over a six digits. Of, uh, work with a local contractor and it had never been, that, that work had never been bitted out. As you can imagine, that raised my eyebrows, like, whoa. So we've done over a hundred thousand dollars of business with a, a local contractor and he never went to bid to get that work. Cause it was just one work job after another and then next thing you know, this is what we've spent in the last twelve months. Well, clearly, you know, if we're, if we're running a more efficient, we would go out to bid for those services and see if we can reduce those costs. This is the kind of stuff that the city administrator does not have the time to get to. But I would like to think he's gonna drop that on the to-do list of a new utility service director, bid this service out and see if we can reduce some cost here. So I, I, I wanted to mention that as an example of how this, this person's gonna add value. And then my re- recall of the, of the budget, uh, conversation is that Sheldon very much does not like being in the office. He does not wanna do all the paperwork and the management and the budgeting and the planning. That is not where he shines. He shines out in the field, and so he was very, I think, supportive of getting some management to take that off of his desk. And let him stay out in the field. That was my recollection of that conversation.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so we got a motion on the floor to approve the recruitment for the utilities director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, aye.
So, nay? Did you say?
I said nay.
Nay, so you got four yays, no, one, two, three, four.
Five yays.
I was a yay.
You were a yay, so one, two, three, four.
And are you a no?
I'm a no. One, two, three no's. So it then passed to go ahead and recruit. Recruitment of the utilities director.
Just trying to confuse them.
You just gotta relax.
All right, I hear your no.
You forgot that, right?
Yes, council member, through it. Boom, and Miss May.
Yes, thank you. All right, reports and presentation, committee reports?
None.
August Finance Report Director Clark is online with us.
Yeah, I will pass over to, uh, Ms. Park.
All right.
Yes, I feel, um, thank you guys for having me. I feel like I'm gonna repeat myself a lot because throughout the night, you guys have kind of touched on. Some of the financial stuff already, uh, so I'm gonna make it quick, cause I know we're, we're close on time. So we're looking good as far as revenues, um, and expenditures are concerned. Expenditures so far a little bit above revenue, but that's fine, um, will catch up. It's mostly a seasonal dip and flow kind of thing. Um, the main things to look out for that will affect finances, um, Mayor Wood, you brought up the ERP system. We did look into an ERP system, Jordan and I, it just is not fiscally possible right now. So we've kind of put it on pause and we're trying to see how much we can get out of Kisel as it exists right now. We've had a couple of meetings with them, um. And we're gonna try to make the best of it, because that's what we're dealing with right now, so. That's the decision that we came to. Um, I'm starting to think ahead right now. I'm starting to look into budget twenty six, twenty sevens preparation. Um, and in, especially with going through some of the hiccups that we've had with the audits. You, you, I think you mentioned it to Mayor Woods, um, not having an inventory list, the list has not been updated in years. Um, so that is something that is on my list, um, that was flagged in the audit. Um, also making sure that we, especially a fixed assets list, just making sure that we account for them better. Because I feel like we don't have like a good, um, tracking system and then being able to, to have some kind of schedule of depreciation and replacement plan. Um. And then also I met with, um, the fire and EMS team and one of the things that. Um, they would like to have is an inventory management system. Um, so we haven't looked into that yet, it's just a conversation for now. Uh, we will probably do a couple demos with, um, a few companies. I'm not quite sure what the costs will look like, but once we've kind of like figured that out, we'll come back to you guys with, um, with numbers. And then you brought up the loan, so that, we're just waiting on the deposit to hit this week. And, um, we already have the invoice to get paid. Once the deposit, that million dollars hits, then we'll pay it and we'll, we will eat the, the interest piece of it. And then going down, um, just a few things that happened this month, um, you know, Lana was. Here tonight, um, joined us, um, last month. She's been amazing so far to, um, have as a part of the team. Um, so the last, this is your fourth week, right?
Yeah.
Four, yeah, so the last four weeks, three and a half-ish weeks have been dedicated to like just getting her on boarded and settled. Um, the audit came up again, um, we've done most of the field work. There are a couple, um, stragglers out there, um, and. We are still looking at an August twenty eighth, um, report date.
November, November.
I'm sorry, November, what did I say, August? I don't know, um, November twenty eighth. I'm sorry?
So it's wishful linking.
I know, I, I'm, I'm going backwards. Uh, November twenty eighth, um, due date for that. And then, of course, we got the, the treasury cares report, uh, falls submitted and accepted by the feds. And that's my roundup for August, right? September, August. What is going on? I don't know which month I'm in anymore, okay.
All right.
Questions? Yes.
Yeah, and, and, I, I asked a question of Mr. Bennett, um, thank you, Dr. Clark, I appreciate the, uh, financial report, this is great. Uh, the question I had that was. We got the money for the loan, when did we get, when was that loan disbursed?
That, I'm, I'm not aware of, I think that was before my time.
January thi- this year.
So that money was, we received it in January and then where did that money get deposited when we received it? It's been accruing interest, correct? I mean, we.
No, we, the, like, in the email, I, I responded, it's, we got the invoices. We submitted for the reimbursement and, I mean, it was a couple days, I mean.
No, no, I'm not talking about reimbursement, I, oh, I'm, I'm, so I, I guess, we got the invoices, then we submit reimbursement and that's not a loan, is it paid? So that, the, I wasn't talking, uh, yeah, okay, so. That we don't get the loan money until the bills were received.
Correct, I, I didn't want to request the funds, having it, the interest built up, that we'd have to pay back until it absolutely needed. Does that make sense? I delayed starting the interest process.
Got it, thank you, yeah, cause I guess what I was trying to figure out was if we were paying less interest and it was accruing in our, uh.
Making money out.
Yes, and we were potentially making money, cause I think a lot of us are looking at the, uh, OTIV loan payment and this interest that's accruing and. I was thinking that maybe we maybe made some money.
No, we didn't.
So Tiffany, clear it in my head then, we're, we just requested up to one point one million dollars?
One million.
Okay, we, okay, but that contract said something different, the contract said one point.
The bid.
Oh, okay, that was the bid, all right, I'm sorry.
There was a contract, but they found stuff, after talking to city administrator today, they found stuff that we could do when we get need as.
Smaller buyer and stuff, so we wound up saving money.
Yeah, so it came in at. One million twenty dollars or something like that. Marion, did you have a question?
I have a question for Shantae, please.
Shantae, this is for you. Shantae, can you tell me, um, why the month of August isn't closed and it's October?
Because we're, we haven't closed previous years yet, so until we've closed the previous years, we're still. No, we just did, when, right?
August.
Well, what do you mean it's not closed?
You said here, I understand it's unaudited numbers and with the month not completely closed, adjustments may get made. Have you, have you closed it, uh, wait a minute, have you closed it within the city for August, for that month, for this month? Have you closed it, meaning posted all your journal entries and everything else? I realize it's not audited, but it's still a closed month, is it not?
Yes, it's a closed month, but. The, I always preface that because we haven't audited the previous year. And the previous year before that, so with the, once those get done, I don't know what the numbers will eventually look like. So I just always put it in there just in case something changes along the way that. It doesn't seem like they're completely different numbers, does that make sense?
Understand, yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Shantae? All right. Thank you, thank you for staying after all this. All right, move on. Audit stats.
Uh, well, I think we've talked about this quite a bit tonight, uh, audit trackers prepared, uh, showing, uh. Hopeful past deadlines and new deadlines and a more detailed breakdown of item by item prevented by, uh, Director Clark. So a- as of right now, we don't see any issue or reasons to why the November, end of November date timeline will change.
Anybody have any questions or anything on the audit status?
Where's the audit tracker?
I emailed an updated one.
So is there a reason why email stuff can't just get put in our packet?
Um, so this one was the original packet and that was sent out after, I think I put it out October, Thursday. Um, and I have printed out for those that have specifically requested for hard copy. If you want to be added to that list. I just can, yeah.
I come, I grab my stuff in my box and sit down at the meeting on these email stuff, but I don't get it in my box and I'm without the information.
Right, it wasn't in your box. It wasn't in my box either.
No.
No, I printed it at home.
Okay.
Yep.
Does anyone want a copy?
No, I can share with my table, but she's, she's generous. I'm like, I just, I just respectfully requested anything that's in the workshop. And you know, like, if I kind of grab stuff out of the box and I sit down at the meeting, I don't bring my personal devices to the meetings.
Yeah.
And if I don't have a paper copy, then I have nothing to fall on.
Especially things that don't get added online, like that, that isn't referenceable, you know, particularly to the city website. I would say definitely important for those things.
Okay, and Bernard, did you have a question?
Yes, regarding the audit, so just to, to make sure I'm clear, so we're going to meet with the auditor when, and it's safe to assume that, uh, they're going to give us a report on this audit that they're just completing, but we're also going to almost have a special item to talk about the path forward and resources required. And again, any, you know, any hiccups that occurred in the last twelve months. So we can zero in on fixing those and move this next audit process in a much more efficient manner. So I have two questions. Uh, one, is that on the agenda? But two, when is that meeting?
When the audit gets done and that meeting will happen because they'll present it to council. And their response to discussing issues is, this is what they told me. This may be, be better discussed at a city council meeting where we present our audit results. Generally, we would, when we present on the audit, we also discuss any issues we encountered related to the audit. And we allow time for counselors to ask questions regarding the process and the audit itself. At that point, we will have a full understanding of the audit overall and be better equipped to field some of the questions and concerns the counselors have. I believe this open dialogue will set the tone and the pace for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit. And that's what, uh, Shantae's hoping to is it will be smoother the next one.
Okay, well, if I can be a stickler, so if I'm understanding, that won't happen with our cour, our current plan until December, right? That, that, we anticipate that will be done at the eleven twenty-seven of twenty-five, is that correct?
That's their estimate, yes. And then it would, wouldn't be in front of council until, uh, whatever that first meeting is, the twelfth or whatever.
Okay.
Eight, now eight.
Alright, so eight, eight December. Look, guys, I, I, I don't want to wait that long. I, I, I would like to call them and even if it's via Zoom. We get them to join our next meeting and we have this conversation about why the last audit took so long and then some kind of understanding on what it's gonna take to get this next audit done. Uh, my preference is we meet them sooner than, you know, what is today? Uh, it's October. We're, we're talking, you know, over a month, over two, almost two months before we can have better clarity on our audit plan. That's too long for me. I prefer if they came at our next meeting via Zoom, we just talk about that one thing.
We can request it, I don't know. We can request it. I can request. I, I requested them to come tonight and they preferred to wait till the audit's complete. So, but we.
But I, 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 you know, I would be happy to take that phone call and explain to why I wanted earlier, you know? Um.
Yeah.
If, 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 if council supports that, this is how I feel. I don't know how the rest of you guys feel. Do, are you okay waiting to December eighth or do you want it quicker? That's the question for council. I can tell you where I'm at.
I honestly thought we'd be on our second audit being done by December, so I'm for whatever we gotta do to get it done.
I am too.
That's three.
No.
And we can't make any decisions right now because we're not in action items.
No, but we're, we would just be giving direction to the city administrator on whether this should be considered for, uh, an agenda item at the next meeting. It's not taking action. It's just talking about the agenda.
Right, we can ask him to request the auditors to come and see what they say and then place it on the agenda if they say yes. Does that sound like what you're wanting?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what I want.
Okay, I got it. Alright, he's got it.
Thank you.
Any?
What's the cost of this?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I'd have to look at their hourly rate, hourly rate. I do not know. Because I'm sure we'll be charged for it. Okay, anybody else got any questions?
I was just gonna see, I know that when you've done other presentations in the past, we've had the person move ups. They didn't have to.
Yeah.
I wonder, you know, to Eric's point, you know, if we can get them in and out of here, I, I think that November twenty-eighth didn't sound terrible, like it made sense, but then when we started thinking, uh, it's beginning December, two months, I agree, that's, uh, that's all.
That, and maybe we do offer a Zoom, that's why I did offer a city attorney Zoom. Because then we don't have that time traveling and hopefully to save money to use, uh, attorney time for other things.
And put it at the front of the agenda. I think that's a good idea.
Yes. So we will see on that. Alright, moving on. City Administrator Bennett report. Alright, handful of items. Uh, biggest one is probably Mary Street. Um, gorgeous beer, I mean, I can't miss before I forget. Um, gorgeous beer will be covering the cost to do an improvement of Mary Street to allow them to use Mary Street as an official entrance point for their business. Once completed, Mary Street will be maintained by the city. For the, for the street to meet all design and safety requirements, it needs to expand into Hood River School District property. The school district approved an easement to allow the street in, on their property. Attached is a map of the updates. The red outline is what pavement currently exists. The blue outline is where the street is surveyed to be and green, uh, and green is where the new street will be. Um, this is kind of hard to follow the map and gonna, you guys want to sit with me and go over it? Um, but they did land use planning, oh gosh, before I even started. Um, and they were told if they wanted to use Mary Street on the backside of their property, they had to do an improvement and they voted no. Then they realized what they was gonna be, their ADA entrance didn't meet ADA standards. They've had a temporary agreement in to use Mary Street as ADA entrance only. And now they're wanting to improve it so it can be an official entrance to their venue site. So this is what's moving forward. It will be a vast improvement. Yep. Any questions?
Up here, there's a house right there. So Mary Street is this.
There's the tennis courts and it's kind of a little wider because it's all, and then there's
Yes.
The white, there's kind of a white, like, two-story house. Then where it's like.
Yeah, let me, I'll bring up Google Maps.
I managed for map and my brain of like the actual. I had to do the same thing. I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring up Google Maps. So Mary Street is right behind Gorgeous, right up in there. Gorgeous house, so. Yeah, this map was all, yeah, this map was a little confusing. The tennis courts, I mean.
The tennis courts are between Gorgeous and the school, but on this map, it shows that.
On the yellow line is between the tennis courts and Gorgeous. It's a little confusing.
When he brings it up here, he'll show.
Yeah, he's bringing it up. It really distorts it on the screen, he doesn't, yeah. Oh, that's super delay. Eric, right, no, full wait, I don't want you. Whoa.
Boy, you nailed it.
How many times I've zoomed in on this city of Cascade Locks with Google Maps? Okay, um.
That's Mary Street.
Yeah, so then there's Mary Street, this little gravel thing is the physical road. The actual road is actually more where this guy's stuff is, and sorry, uh, Bernard probably should be sharing this. Um, so this stuff will move. The road will be over here. It actually spanned over into this grass area to allow a turnaround for fire trucks. Um, this kind of line right here is actually the, guess the break of the property line. All of this is school district property. So it's, it's, it's a mess. It, it, it's a mess up there.
Can I?
Go ahead, Eric.
Preview, the previous city administrator was working with the school district to get that repaved. And there was issues of whose responsibility was it and where it was supposed to be. On, oh, sorry.
On Oneya.
Yes.
Yeah.
That portion of it. Was that part of any of this discussion?
No, it was not. Yeah, so the, the, the new construction will pretty much end right here. There'll be a nice feather, you know, connection, but Oneya itself really will not be touched. Any other questions?
And so, and he's trying again, the blue line's what will be paved, the red line is what now?
Those, the red line, the red line is what's physically there right now as pavement. The blue line, that skinny blue line is actually what is surveyed as the road, which meets, meets zero actual road standards. None. It's like twelve feet wide and it was at its widest. Why it was even surveyed, designed like that, I have no idea. Um, but the green, the, the shaded area is what's going to be built.
Got it.
Yeah, so there's a good chunk of school property that this, this new road is going to go.
Thank you.
Well, with the current road goes in and the new road. Alright, any questions? But move on. Alright. Right, well, curtain burn. A second round of yard debris burning with the curtain burner set for, uh, it's now been switched to the over twenty-first. After this burn, we will know if continuing the curtain burner program will work slash pick in the city's budget. A reminder to council that the city received a twenty thousand dollar grant, um, from the Oregon State Fire Marshal's office to test this program to see if it's feasible. The first round, um, the gentleman was here for I think two and a half days and the bill was five grand, somewhere in there, and it got through most of like a year's worth. So I think it is feasible. We're looking at probably ten to fifteen grand a year, depending on how much people bring into the city. So I, I do think it is feasible, so we're trying to build it into the budget. Uh, LOC conference, as I mentioned in my report, I attended the LOC conference in Portland. The biggest takeaway, um, is the power of an urban renewal district and how it can be used to promote economic development. I plan to do more research, um, this fall, winter, and present to council sometime in spring, but it, I think it can help us. Um, housing code grant is mentioned, um, as well in my report, we, weekly report, we awarded a grant from Old Oregon DLCD to review and update housing portions, the housing portions of our development code. The grant asked for a hundred thousand, however, the exact amount will need to be worked out between the city, the state, and the consultant that is hired. Uh, council will be updated as we move along. Uh, the SIP grant, the city applied, um, but did not receive a grant for the leak detection study for the older portions of the water system. Uh, the grant would have been used to test some meters as well and analyze water, water usage or water loss. Determine the true loss number. Staff will now revert back, do another review of the numbers, bring in an engineer to help us assess as well. Uh, last item is OMEU conference, the Oregon Municipal Electrical Utilities Annual Conference is this Thursday and Friday. The Timberline, uh, and I will not be getting a hotel. It's only about a forty-five minute drive for me, so.
Or is there a session or feedback on the new BPA contract?
That'll be on the next meeting.
Yeah, so I mean, like, is, are we the only ones redoing or are other?
Everybody, everybody gets power from BPA, all three hundred utilities, whoever it is, it's a.
Is there a session here at this place to discuss the contract as a collective group?
Hmm, probably not. I don't think so. I'd have to look. At this point, they're issued. Contracts have been issued to the cities.
Okay.
Um, but thi- this has been a, oh gosh, we're probably in five-year process at this point. This, this has been going on for quite a while.
Tiffany, so on this, uh, back on the SIP grant, can you give a little, um, I, you, you might, you might not need to do it tonight, but I, I'm curious on, on what exactly your process is going to be. Figuring out the water loss. I mean, is it basically just taking the bills, comparing it to how much, how much water we're using and seeing what the.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, and then will that be presented to council?
Yeah, once I work with Sheldon, have the engineers with you.
Do you know how long you think? Not, not right now, no. Who, who's the engineers, N, NCK?
AKS, same, same ones that helped us design the, the system when we had the water, the grant to the water system back in twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I, I, I bumped into one of them the other day and he mentioned that it's not this simple as, as seeing what goes out and, and seeing what they charge and reading the years. Instead, it was a lot more involved than that. Have you talked to him recently?
I have not, no, not, not since this, we didn't get the grant. Alright.
I've, I've got a question for Bernard really on the SIP grants. I remember when that came up before Bernard, you were advocating for doing more of a simple kind of computation and determine our loss before you spent a lot of resources on this. You remember that conversation?
Oh, yeah, very much so.
You're gonna apply for the SIP grant, which would get us to do the deeper analysis. I think you kind of just sort of glossed over that, but what were you even saying? And is it appropriate? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I, look, I, I, I acknowledge, I think, uh, Councilmember Kyle was saying, you know, this can get complex and, and she's not wrong, but there is a, you can do kind of multiple levels of analysis on what our water loss is. There's like a, uh, kind of a, a very high level analysis and then a more in-depth analysis. I'm asking staff to just start with that high level analysis where you very simply, uh, calculate how much water are our wells pumping in a given month? And then, then calculate how much water do we sell to customers in that same time period? And that will give you a very rough, there, you, you need to do some, a lot of like, uh, you know, uh, course corrections and, 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 uh, you know, if you want to drill in and get a, a much clearer number, that does take, it's a, it's a much more detailed process. But that, but that simple analysis is not that hard and that's what I was, uh, uh, seeking as a baseline, just to kind of st, give us a start point on how worried we should be. Does that answer your question? Councilmember Happy?
Yeah, thank you. That's what I thought. I, I just was, since the SIP grant wasn't happening, I, I just wanted to kind of ask for you to clarify that point and see if that was an option from the city administrator to do kind of a, just a quick analysis, um, without, you know, necessarily going to, uh, with the assistance of the engineer or help design a system. That just sounds costly to me, um, and time.
Alright. Alright, so moving on to mayor and city council comments. Bernard, we're gonna start with you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Uh, one, I think everyone knows we have dumpster days coming up. And, you know, uh, if you've been up there to Dry Creek, you know, there's several huge piles of Scotch broom. And I don't think I can deal with one truck. Now, I've got a friend who's gonna let me borrow a truck. But if someone has a truck and wants to help me, uh, I would appreciate that help, um, to, uh, reduce the number of loads we need to, to, to take, uh, to get that off the mountain. I'd like to think we can get it all done, but, uh, I have someone, something else planned for the day, so I, I'd like to try to get this all knocked out in the morning if possible. So I'm looking for a truck or two to help me, uh, reduce that fire hazard up there. Not that there were any risks now, you know, the rains have started, but, you know, anticipation of next year. And I would love to, uh, but, you know, ant- anticipation of next year, and I would love to, uh, watch that go on the, uh, the, uh, the burn curtain, that would be, I think that'd be a very joyful event for someone who's gone to town in that Scotch broom. Um, let's see, that was the first thing, oh, and then, you know, I continue to, uh, do litter work and, and support, uh, the pickers in town who, he'll help me clean up, and I was out running yesterday afternoon, and I went down Court Trail four hundred in the rain, I know I'm a nut, but I came da- back on the historic highway on the bike ped path, and lo and behold, there was a huge, uh, garbage bag of trash that someone had dumped on, right on the path, about, you know, two hundred yards from, uh, Bridge Side, and I called up one of our volunteers and lickety-split, uh, Chris Matlock was out there this afternoon and got it cleaned up, so just want to say, uh, express my appreciation for him being Johnny on the spot and getting that cleaned up and keeping our community looking good. And I had one other thing, uh, let's see. Um. Oh, I talked about otters, okay, that was it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bernard, Courtney.
Elena?
Elena.
Elena, welcome, wonderful to meet you.
Thank you, you too.
Very excited to see how all this plays out, goes forward, moves forward, starts to be moving, that'll be great. Um, Shantae, thank you so much for coming.
Hmm, I know I brought it up last meeting, um, due, but looking at the definition of consensus is still, still something that is very much in the front of memory, um, you know, I know we've had, took a consensus on, on the definition of consensus, and I was hoping that we could maybe get some movement on that, um. Uh, I, I hear that our post office is being, uh, trashed at night, um. I'm worried that, that their next step is going to be what many other cities have done, which is locking the doors overnight, um, there are alternate entry options, um, that some other post offices have used, but I, I, I don't have a solution, maybe we can collectively brainstorm. Some, some help them of some sort, I don't know, um. Uh, hearing feedback from residents concerning the recent indigenous, indigenous persons pro- proclamation recommendation. I hear how important this issue is to our community and, uh, and the upset of the perceived lack of transparency of our council, I take both of these matters very seriously and I would like to revisit putting them proclamation back on the agenda.
So, Courtney?
Yeah.
All right, Tiffany.
First, I'm going to, uh, clear up some misinformation reporting done on me concerning the last meeting, current article dated nine thirty twenty-five in the Columbia Gorge News. Uh, to be clear, I said in light, in light of recent national events, I'm more resolved than ever not to divide the community into small groups, I also went on to read, read, read all the proclamations for September twenty-two and for the month of September, which are, which there are fifty-five in total. Uh, Ms. Noteboom chose to pick a couple of the most insignificant silly proclamations stating that they were not federally recognized observances. In doing so, she had to ignore several important federally recognized observances such as National Suicide Prevention Month and National Childhood Deplacity Month, just to name a few. Um, Daniel Boom can and should do better in, on her reporting. And, and that being said, I am willing to acknowledge the perseverance, strength, courage, and resilience of the indigenous people of our community and thank them for the contributions they have made in our town, the Pacific Northwest, and our country. And if the council would be willing to support such a compromise, I would be willing to support it as well, but I'm, I, I can't support more than that, the council represents all American citizens of Cascade Locks and to continually carve up small parts of our town for specific day recognition encourages division. Just researching the Indigenous People Day, which was proclaimed for the first time last year by a president, um, all I could find were articles like, uh, is it Columbus Day or Indigenous Day? Some articles talk about one, some talk about the other, uh, some states call it one thing, others call it the other, which just confirms what I'm saying about causing division. And then, as far as the consensus, um, I, we need to, we need to decide, uh, if the consensus is a vote, because to me it seems like it's kind of a vote to give a, kind of a nod. If it's a, is a faux vote, I'm not really sure where the term consensus came up, I know Kathy says that it's all or nothing, but according to our charter, uh, section nineteen says, uh, you know, for a vote required except as the charter provides otherwise express concurrence of a majority, which is four, four members, if, with a council, with a full council, of the council is necessary to decide affirmative, affirmatively on a, any question before the council. So, I, I think we should just do without consensus and just, it's, it's for, it's a majority, you know, I mean, it's just a simple majority as our charter states, so that, that would be my, my input on that, and then also, one other thing, I, can we, um, I don't know. Uh, on the enterprise zone, I think it would be really good for us to have, I don't know, a little class on what an enterprise zone is, because I, I've never quite understood it, I know that, uh, in the past, we gave Cardinal Glass part of our enterprise zone, I don't even understand how that works, I don't understand, once we give that to them, does, does that expire after a certain amount of time? And then we get it back, what, I don't, I don't understand what all happens with that, may- maybe Bernard can clue me in, I don't know, because I'm, I'm pretty sure it was our, when you were city administrator, that we gave the enterprise zone to Cardinal Glass.
Yeah, and we'll have to wait for the follow-up to more pushing that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but I'm just saying sometime in the future can we have, or direct me in a place that can help me understand it, because I, it's just, that's so confusing to me, it's a very confusing thing. That's all, that's it.
All right, Eric.
Um, I guess it, it kind of all centers around, um, council procedure seven point one dash C, and that says that all council members and the mayor must go through the city administrator, and that we received an email that, in which the mayor directed city staff to file a, or to print off a report. And so to follow up with that, I do not remember a council consensus of whatever we want to define ca- consensus to call the city attorney and to work with this, the city auditors, both of which are expenditures that were made at the decision and at the discretion of the mayor without consensus of the staff, or consensus of council. And just to reiterate this point, under the previous mayor's regime, it was brought up that a hundred and fifty dollar expenditure was absurd and horrible to be made without council consensus, and so I'm asking, why do we have a change in consensus? And, or not consensus to contract an attorney and to be contacting the auditors without the express permission?
Is that all you have? One, I, as the mayor, and we could have asked Ruben if he was still on there, you, you're more than welcome to ask him. As the mayor, I can ask any staff for anything, however.
That's against what the council procedure says.
This is, we just talked, I'm just telling you what the city attorney just told me, so this is what I just clarified with him, because I did ask for a detailed pledger from, um, staff member, and I, and I was, sent an email from the city administrator about it, so I clarified it with the city attorney. You guys as counselors cannot, however, the mayor can't, but out of respect for the staff and Jordan, me and him talked about it, I will not do that. I will go through him for my request.
So you can call the lawyer whatever you want?
Yes.
For however long you want?
Oh, I'm sure.
That's the city's money, that's the taxpayers' money.
We, we can talk about it more.
And the auditors as well? All those emails that you have cost money.
The auditors, this all string from the letter that the auditor sent to council. And I happened to respond to it. And then that opened up a dialogue and conversation. And I'm trying to look out for the best interest of the citizens.
I'm trying to be physically responsible, but when previous council members are complaining about a hundred and fifty dollar expenditure, like, what is the cost of?
Being a mayor or being a counselor are a little bit different, so.
I get that, but you're making choices of spending cities' money, taxpayers' money without permission.
I would think that that's, if you have more questions, you can ask the city attorney.
I tried to, and you said to bring it up during council discussion.
Oh, I didn't know that's what you were gonna ask.
I said I have severe res- reservations about how this process is heard.
Well, I did ask him, and I'm giving you what he told me. And I explained it to Jordan as well last week, or, I think it was last week yet, because today's Monday, that that's what the city attorney told me, but out of respect, so staff don't get confused thinking they have seven bosses that I would take my request through him as.
That's not my concern, my concern's the cash that you're spending.
You're implying that she's being frivolous. I, I don't, I don't see her as being frivolous. We pay for a certain amount of hours per month with the city attorney. And you're, I'm the highest elected official in the city. I am the general supervisor of the city administrator. And it says it all over. So I would say, if you don't like my answers, you can talk to Ruben.
I can't.
Huh?
I cannot talk to him.
You could have Jordan connect you.
That would require consensus of council. Secondly, um, I would like to proceed with the land acknowledgement statement to be read at the beginning of every staff, or council meeting that was suggested by our wonderful participants today.
All right, Marian.
I only have, uh, one request, and I don't know how else to do this, but to bring it up here. As much as I thank Shantae for these, uh, beautiful, um, financials, sorry, Brian. I would like to see revit, the report out of the cell that gives you revenue and expenses with comparison to budget for the month. That to me gives more information on a department basis where you can see how departments are doing. I understand the overall, uh, thing, but I would like to have that every month, if I could, please.
All right.
Um. Thank you, Greg and Clark for being here this evening, thank you for stepping in for Ms. Bluesley this evening, well done, uh, and welcome.
Thanks, yeah.
Uh, I think I was thinking back, uh, just about, you know, our election a year ago, and I think a lot of us, you know, I was surprising how much agreement there was between all the, the candidates about the issues that we identified as the top issues, and I think for everybody, there was agreement, the number one issue we had was our cities' finances. So to see that we've got a finance director in place and we have, uh, our billing clerk now in position gives me, uh, hope that we're moving things in the right direction, uh, I think that there's been a lot of frustration about the, the audits and the lack of progress, but I'd like to hope that that's kind of coming to a head and might result in some positive change. Um, so I think we had a good discussion on that this evening, and, uh, I hope we have good luck getting them to our next council meeting, and I appreciate Richard Seager bringing that as a recommendation, um, bringing his comments on that, uh, and I want to thank the, uh, residents that came forward today to, uh, speak on the, uh, land acknowledgement, and I also am in favor of, uh, I don't know what that process will look like, uh, but, uh, I, I'm in favor of that. And then the, uh, consensus discussion, uh, I know that we're not a budget committee meeting, you know, that's separate and that's different, but with twelve people there, you, you do a fantastic job of reading the room, and I feel like that's kind of what the consensus is when you're the presiding officer, is to get kind of a general agreement, and that's how I've always kind of handled that when I've been running meetings, it's, it's the general agreement, okay, that's the direction we're going, we're not gonna make everybody happy and we get that, but we have to keep things moving forward, and that's kind of the role of the presiding officer. Um, so I'm open to, uh, I don't know that we need to workshop that to officially discuss that, uh, but I'd like to nail that down because I agree. Uh, yeah, I like the idea that, um, our, the reason why we have a board here, so that would, no one decision is made by any one person, and by having one person say, I don't like this, it can keep it off the agenda, which feels undemocratic, so.
All right.
There you go. That's it.
All right, I just have, um, I want to thank Joanne and Marva for coming out about the land uh, proclamation. And then also, we had yard debris last Saturday. And we had fifteen truckloads and one bike load. And then this Saturday, we have the dumpster days. And then I have a port and mayor monthly meeting, I meet with the port monthly, and we talked about this room, because it's probably gonna be like three to five years before we do anything with it, so it'd be nice to like make it look better, make it sound better, all that. Um, and I would just like to express to council how difficult this position has been. Um, I don't think you realize the hours that I put in researching, and I would never, ever do anything to commit fraud or steal money or whatever, because I'm also a citizen of this town. Um, and sometimes it is necessary to talk, I'd rather not be having these conversations, I'd rather be a mayor that just spends council meetings and sits here and then we're done. However, that has not been my experience as being mayor, I'm spending forty hours a week, easy, researching and finding information, so you guys are better educated on stuff too, because that's my job. And it's also the city administrator's job to give his and staff's perspective. Um, so, I, I don't know how to make this any clearer or better, I've tried everything, Eric, and it seems like every time at council meeting, no matter what's done or said or whatever, you, you're never happy, and I wish I could change that, because I really have been working hard to like make you feel comfortable, make you feel heard, make you feel seen, all of that, and I actually take it as an insult to think that I would be wasting the citizens' money. Um, considering I give up forty hours.
Yeah, it's the two years you spent in the audience in the presentations that occurred, and the hypocrisy that exists.
I don't know what you're, I can't verify that, because I don't know what you're talking about, what conversation, so. Anyway, we need to move on, so we can go, um, we're gonna be going into executive session, and I, um, section nine was in the charter, so I got that, and I'll be looking at the consensus thing and seeing about some of the things on the agenda, but that's all I have, and we will be moving into executive session.
It's time to call Bernard?
No. I'm down, I'm here, go ahead.
Are you good?
Yes.
And then I think according to the council procedures, we have to have a motion to work past ten. So I'll make a, so I'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, for another twenty minutes, how much, how much time do you think we're gonna need? It depends on your discussion.
We're just making a motion to work past ten.
Okay, yes, I make a motion that we're gonna work past ten.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Okay, six in favor of working past ten and one opposed.
Should I put that under executive session here?
No, I got it.
Yeah, he's got you. They, you've done an awesome job.
Thank you for asking questions and all that.
Yeah. All right, so we're off of, we're not on YouTube.
You have to stay with executive session.
I know. Yeah, we're gonna make sure we're all on.
Moving into executive.
Yep, we're moving into executive session at ten oh two PM.
Before we go into executive session, don't you have to state?
That's what I'm getting. All right, we're gonna recess the regular session, move into executive sessions, stating the ORS for the justification of ORS one nine two point six six zero two A, employment of public officers, employees, and agents in unlimit- under limited circumstances.
So, so she said.
And then I have for the media, I have that all. What was my book? It says the the executive session and the executive session information is confidential and may not be reported.